So let's call October 21 regular Cupertino regular City Council meeting to order. Let's have the pledge of allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rocco, please.
Councilmember Fruin.
Here.
Councilmember Mohan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
And Mayor, Councilmember Wong is absent from tonight's meeting, and he would like me to share a brief video that I can play now.
Yeah, sure.
Hello, this is Councilmember Ray Wong. Hope you're having a great meeting. I will not be here the next few days as I am hosting 200 of our clients here in the Bay Area. So wishing a wonderful meeting, but more importantly, hope you have a great debate and great conversation. Thanks for being here today.
Okay. Next. So do we have any closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor. We did have a closed session as a special meeting, and the council discussed the item on the agenda, and no reportable action was taken.
Okay, thank you. Now we have the first ceremonial item. That's a recognition of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we have a presentation from Matri.
Yes, Mayor.
Who is providing services to Cupertino.
Niti Kataruka, Matri client advocate, will be providing comments this evening for this item. If you'd like to join the podium, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and the members of the City Council and the members of the public. My name is Niti Kataruka, and I'm a resident of Cupertino. Today, I stand here as an advocate for victims and survivors of domestic violence to commemorate October as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I represent Matri, an organization devoted to serving survivors of domestic violence since 1991, and want to take a few moments to talk about an epidemic that is pervasive in our homes, cities, state, country, and all over the world. If we just speak about California, it has the highest rates of domestic violence experienced by both men and women when compared to the national averages. There were 125 domestic violence-related homicides in California in 2024, of which 93 fatalities were women and 32 were male. Last year, Matri provided culturally responsive services to 814 individuals. Organizations around California served more than 57,000 individuals with life-saving supporting services, with Santa Clara County catering to around 8,000 survivors alone. The need for a comprehensive plan to address domestic violence in our communities is urgent, and we thank the city of Cupertino for providing the much-needed assistance in this area. I request the City Council and its residents to partner with us in preventing domestic violence and facilitating effective intervention methods if it happens. Here are a few things that everyone could consider. Create a supporting environment for everyone to seek out information and services related to relationship abuse. Demand curriculum and practices that uplift healthy relationships at every educational level and professional spaces. Enact and support policies that address intersectional approach to addressing domestic violence. Support funding for domestic violence service providers at the federal, state, county, and city levels. Rethink law enforcement responses to crisis situations with special focus on stopping brutality against people of color and trainings on domestic violence. Evaluate and improve language access at city facilities. Involve non-governmental organizations as thought partners while planning city-related activities, and offer training on cultural responsiveness to various local government employees and agencies. I thank you, everybody, for your time.
And thank you. Thank you for your organization, for all the work that you have done. I know that this issue spans all income levels and all ethnicities. So thank you for all your work. Do we take a photo with this? Okay. So please come up, we'll take a photo. So, yeah. Do you want to join? Okay, yeah. Okay. So, yeah, here. Thank you for all the work that you have been doing, yeah. Do we want to... Facing this way? Okay.
I hope you're okay for us to post it on our social media. Thank you.
Thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And then the second item, I have the honor to recognize the years of service of Cupertino Rotary Club. I cannot say with words how much contribution Rotary Club has done over the years. I think it's about as many years as Cupertino has been. You guys are celebrating also 70 years anniversary? Yes, and then you have many, many projects in various corners, not only in Cupertino, but also in the world. So thank you. Yeah. Do you have a presentation?
Mayor Kathy Yates, Cupertino Rotary Club president, will give a presentation. And just give me one moment, and I'll pull up your slides.
You might want to speak up a little, or...
President of Rotary, the Rotary Club of Cupertino. I'm joined here by my predecessor presidents, Alyssa Sakis and Jeff Mo, as well as a number of Rotarians in the audience who I might ask to stand at this point. And we wanted to start off by saying, first of all, we greatly appreciate the recognition that your proclamation gives this club for the 70 years of service that we have given to the community. I'd also like to make a few comments about our organization for those who may not be familiar with Rotary. As your proclamation states, "We are all about service to the community, locally, regionally, and internationally." Our members give generously of their time, as well as their financial resources, to conduct meaningful service projects, such as the Community Harvest, the Fall Festival, and the traditional turkey meal distribution that our club has, that is depicted on this slide and our club traditionally does. Next slide, please. For our club, partnership is everything, and we truly value the partnership that we have had with the city over these long decades. We don't just do some of our work through partnership, we do all of our work with partnership. And these are the logos of some of the Cupertino organizations that we have partnered with over the last couple of years. We like to work in mutual cooperation with these groups with the goal of creating a healthy community for all residents. Next slide, please. Our service work is organized and conducted through what we call avenues of service that help identify and address unmet needs in different areas, including our local region, youth, veterans, job seekers, climate resilience advocates, and underdeveloped areas outside of the United States. Last year, our club contributed more than 12,000 hours of volunteer work and in excess of $450,000 in funding to projects done through these avenues of service. Next slide. We are currently 207 members in our club and part of an international network of, which is the United States' oldest service club, the Rotary Club International, that has 1.2 million members worldwide in more than 200 countries around the globe. We welcome anyone who's curious about who we are and who wants to give back to the community through service to come join us at one of our weekly meetings. We normally meet on Wednesdays at Quinlan Center, where we share a meal together, enjoy fellowship, hear from inspiring speakers who help broaden our perspectives about the community and our world. So please come join us. You can learn more about us at our website, www.cupertino rotary dot com, or you can watch our activities on Facebook and Instagram. So thank you again for this recognition. We look forward to continued decades of collaboration with the city in the years to come. Can I invite all the Rotarians to come up for a picture? Okay.
So here, the proclamation. Yeah, really, really is an honor to recognize you, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You guys have done so much for Cupertino. Yeah. Okay. Squeeze everyone, squeeze in. Step forward, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Actually, we don't need to rush today. Okay. Next, we have the recognition for the many years of service of Cupertino De Anza Lions Club. I apologize that we didn't list the club name correctly, but then it's correct on the proclamation. So this is also my great honor to recognize the De Anza Lions Club, which I'm a member of. And sorry, I haven't spent that much time volunteering, but I really appreciate all of you for the work that you have done. And so...
Mayor, I believe we have...
Do you have a presentation?
John Smith, Cupertino De Anza Lions Club director, to provide comments and receive the proclamation. Welcome.
Well, good evening, members of the council. My name is John Smith. I am two-time past president of this club, and I'm very proud to represent Cupertino De Anza Lions tonight. This is a club that was founded 56 years ago by a group of teachers who had an early start at 6:45 a.m. every Thursday before daily classes began. Throughout our existence, we have supported the Crippled Children's Camp, now known as Camp Via, in the Cupertino foothills just above the dam by providing a petting zoo, a wheelchair-accessible garden, and annual upkeep and maintenance of the facilities there. This garden is still flourishing, but unfortunately, the petting zoo had to close as it became a source of sustenance to local wildlife, unfortunately. Various fundraising events have included selling fireworks, an annual charity golf tournament, a bike ride for diabetes, and a unique event when we cooked burgers and sold snow cones on Highway 85 on the eve of its opening. For many years, we sold furniture and household items from a monthly stall at the De Anza Flea Market, and recently, we have raised significant funds by providing assistance to the register of voters. Our service events include a high school speech contest, Project Lionus, providing homemade blankets to traumatized children, annual Thanksgiving food drive, providing 2,000 meals to Santa Clara County families at food risk. We have always provided eyeglass recycling to clinics abroad by collecting glasses from banks, hospitals, libraries, and opticians. Our Lions district owns a traveling health service vehicle that attends public events as far south as King City. A recent addition has been to run vision clinics locally. Our club is proud to have sponsored the first clinic in our district, and in the last two years, we have run five more events in San Jose, Santa Clara, Watsonville, Salinas, and at the Mexican consulate in San Jose. Lions provide eye exams using a team of dedicated volunteer optometrists and recycled glasses to uninsured patients at no cost. To date, over 2,000 patients have benefited from this service. Our future plans are to increase volunteerism in Cupertino, to mount a club membership drive, to increase awareness of Lions via social media, to establish partnership with businesses and corporations in Cupertino, and to participate in city projects and work with other nonprofits to increase our effectiveness. Our club is sincerely honored to be recognized by this proclamation, and we pledge to continue our community work to the best of our ability. I am represented by some members of our club and district leadership. We have our district governor and our vice district governor with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you all for all the work that you have done in the region and beyond. So let's take a photo. That's okay, yeah. So...
Will I hold the proclamation?
Yeah. See everyone? So I'd like to encourage everyone to read the proclamation that's in our council agenda. I had to kind of fight to present a proclamation rather than a certificate, because proclamation, we are able to list out the founding of the organization, all the contribution over the years, and that's on the city record. But at the same time, you are welcome to submit your speech or your presentation to the written record of the meeting at publiccomment@cupidino dot o or dot gov. That goes for anyone who is making a speech in any council meeting. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all the work that you have done. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So this year, I have usually recognized the two community organizations in the second council meeting of each month for those who have consistently contributed to Cupertino. And so we have two, I think, probably... Yeah, so I encourage everyone to read the other proclamations we have presented. And, but today, we have an honor for a special recognition of Montavista High School students for earning the eighth place in the 2025 Science Olympiad National Tournament. So it's really an honor that, rare that we, our high school can earn a national honor. So do we have a presentation, a speech?
Mayor Julie Choi, who is the Montavista High School's coach, Olympiad team coach, will provide comments and receive certificates on behalf of the students, and then the students can join the council onstage for a photo.
Okay, yeah.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council and the public. My name is Julie Choi, and today I am joined by Montavista Science Olympiad team, parents of the science, parents and the principal of Montavista. I am honored to speak on the behalf of this fantastic team. Three years ago, I began as a head coach of Montavista Science Olympiad, not knowing what the road looked like, but knowing that there were students and families who had held on to hope that one day the team would rise. Our team started small, just 13 students. We didn't even have enough for a full team of 15. So we recruited and trained two new students who were willing to learn everything from scratch. The students put in countless hours, and from those 15 dreamers grew a team supported by an entire community. The school facilities gave us space to study and test our devices. Robotics, woodshop, and the science department lent us equipment. Parents, teachers, and the community groups, like Cloud Dusters, offered their mentorship across 23 different science events. With that community, even though we were a team that hadn't even qualified for states the year before, we started dreaming really, really big. We dared to whisper dreams of Nationals. We didn't say it too loudly, afraid we might jinx it. But behind the scenes, those whispers became plans, and those plans became action. And two years ago, we became the first team in Science Olympiad's history to become national champions on our very first trip to Nationals. We gave hope to other teams on the verge of giving up. We showed them that if you believe, and if you really try, and if you can, you can really get there. Montavista became a symbol of that belief and hope. Last year, we placed eighth at Nationals. But that number doesn't tell the full story. That same year, our students hosted their own invitational, creating opportunities for high school teams across the nations to compete. We've always been more than medals and rankings. What makes this team extraordinary is what happens when we come together. Over midwinter break last year, our junior and senior teams came together to help a struggling event. They met daily. Other students filled the whiteboard with teammates' names, cheering them on every night. At the next competition, that event got first place, and everyone cheered louder than when our entire team won first place. When every student, every parent, and every community member pushes towards the same dream, there's something electric in that kind of unity. It's what carried us through every late night, every test, every build, and ultimately, it's what made us champions in the first place. And that spirit hasn't stopped growing. This year, they've created a big and little mentorship program so that every member feels included and valued, not just those who win medals or make it to Nationals, but everyone who shows up, puts in the work, and keeps the spirit alive for everyone else. To our students, belonging matters just as much as competition. They're building a culture that's not only driven, but compassionate, a team where leadership, inclusion, and purpose comes from within. The 15 dreamers are now the inspiration for other dreamers, and many days, they personally make me reflect and become a better person and a teacher. And I couldn't be more proud of them. So here's to them, the students who believed before, who believed before it was easy to, who rebuilt something out of almost nothing, and who proved that when hope meets action, history is built. Here's to the community of parents, teachers, and the school who believed alongside them, and here's to every dreamer who still whispers what they want most, because one day, those whispers might just become the loudest cheers in the room. Thank you.
Thank you so much, especially, I think, all the accomplishment is not possible without the coaches, the parents, and the school staff to support them every step of the way. And you have inspired so many students to learn the skills that's necessary to survive in today's world, which is team spirit and collaborate and support each other. So thank you so much. Let's take a, come up, everyone come up to the stage.
If the students would like to join the council onstage for a photo now?
Do I have one for the head coach, or just students?
Just students.
Oh, okay. Oh, the cell students, okay. So, yeah. Oh, yeah, we have matching colors.
Thank you so much for your work. Here's that card.
Sure, oh, okay. So... You guys should be getting the flowers, love us. So it may not be yours, so we'll send it out later.
Thank you.
So this card is to the entire City Council that they just handed to us, and so it has, it seems to be signed by multiple students there. Thank you for the recognition by the City Council. Okay.
It's okay if we go home and do our homework. We understand.
Yeah. Okay. So we are very blessed in Cupertino. We have very dedicated parents and teachers and volunteers who make this a very unique community that's have helped our students grow. Next, we have postponements and orders of the day.
No postponements, Mayor.
Are we post, oh, not today, okay. No postponements. And then oral communications. How many we have?
Mayor, I have eight requests, which would bring us to about 24 minutes in Community Hall. And I see one request to speak virtually, so that would be 27 minutes.
Okay, yeah.
Anyone wishing to speak, please have your request submitted in the next nine minutes. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may limit, may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first-come, first-heard basis with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may, however, briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment. Okay, we will begin with our first three speakers are Sean Fong. I have someone that did not leave their name, but regarding Mary Avenue Villas and Lutheran Williams. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Lawrence, council members. My name is Sean, and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident, speaking on my behalf on the Mary Avenue and Garden Gates Neighborhoods projects. And I want to begin by saying that this is not opposing affordable housing. We all want a compassionate, inclusive Cupertino. But when a project like Mary Avenue Villas put public safety, community well-being at risk, we have a responsibility to speak up and ask for accountability. The proposed street narrowing 19.5-foot reductions, a 26% of the current width, eliminates critical public right-of-way that families, cyclists, and pedestrians rely on daily. There isn't a minor adjustment, it's a drastic change that compromised safety for everyone using Mary Avenue. And Mary Avenue is not a street, it's a community, a street that already serves heavy traffic, delivery trucks, and school commuters, and Cupertino trucks. Let's be honest, the project adds 40 new housing units, meaning a dozen of additional vehicle, visitors, service delivery, social securities, medical support, yet the plan shrinks the roads, leaving no buffer for bites, no margins for error. I know there's a bike lane, but from eight feet to five feet. No safe way for emergency public works vehicle to pass before cars stop or double parks. Not to mention that three buildings from the west part hasn't completed yet. This isn't a bad planning, it's dangerous. Family walks their children to Garden Gate Community currently is a lot of overflow traffic is already going through Sterling. Homeside High School cross-country team train here every afternoon. Cyclists, seniors use the route to reach Memorial Park, the Don Burnett Bridge, and the senior center. These aren't statistics, they're our neighbors, our kids, and community. With this design moved forward, the safety is not in theory, but an everyday reality. I urge the council to look beyond the checkbook of housing bills and focus on housing done right. Approving a project that narrowing a key public corridor for the sake of hitting political target is not leadership, it's negligence. Cupertino deserves smart growth, not reckless approval. Let's assure we don't trade safety, access, community trust for a headline or short-term win. We respectfully ask you to pause and reassess the design, because it becomes irreversible mistakes. Let's build housing that strengthen our community, not one that endangers it. Thanks for listening and protecting the safety and integrity of Cupertino neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a request to speak. The individual did not leave a name. If you believe that is you, please come to the podium. Welcome.
Honorable Mayor, council members, my name is Nataraj. I live on Mary Avenue, close to Mary Avenue and Nathanson Avenue. And so this is actually my daily route to go to work and other places. And there's something about the city always does great projects. I mean, I wanted to say that, right? So Mary Avenue Bridge, a landmark, it's a great place. And somehow, something about this project doesn't seem right, it's just the wrong location. And for a lot of the reasons that were already, the points that were made, I'm not going to repeat that, but safety is number one concern, and also the lack of a traffic study or anything else that actually would give us a little more knowledge on the design of this, right? That is the big concern. I would also request, there are other alternate sites available. The railroad project, the section between Stevens Creek and Bub, it's a really wide-open project area, that can, unused railroad, that was actually going to become a trail of some sort. So this would be a perfect area for building, not just, you could build not just 40 homes, you could build a lot more homes there in that area, and also provide for a trail, which would give safe passage for all the Montavista students and Kennedy Middle School. So I would humbly, respectfully submit that this project be reconsidered and then look for other alternate sites as well, and not just fixate on one of the locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lutheran Williams, followed by Dennis Whitaker, and John Swenson, followed by Mac Hobbit, by Murkawa. Welcome, Lutheran.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I'm Lutheran Williams, I'm the head of Tessellations School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your continued engagement and thoughtful guidance as Tessellations works towards our conditional use permit. A few weeks ago, we had the pleasure of meeting with Mayor Chow, who shared several valuable suggestions with us. I'm happy to report that we've already acted on several of them. First, we're excited to announce that on November 2nd, Tessellations will host the MIT-affiliated Julia Robinson Math Festival right here in Cupertino. We hope to open this event to students in the city, not just those at Tessellations, because we believe in nurturing a love of math and creative problem-solving throughout our community. We're also partnering with the India Community Center to offer weekend robotics classes for Cupertino students. This collaboration will expand access to hands-on STEM experiences that inspire curiosity and innovation. On October 16th, we met with David Stillman, the city's transportation manager, along with two of our wonderful and active neighbors, Gil Doyle and Vic Minnan, to continue exploring joint solutions to improve traffic and safety around our campus. We've also connected with Chris Chu, Chief Business Officer, and Allison Liner, Deputy Superintendent of Educational Services for CUSD. They're excited to explore ways we can work together, including establishing the first partnership between a public school district and a private school in Cupertino, hosting a joint science fair promoting innovation and creativity where students from all schools can collaborate and share discoveries, sharing AI resources with the district schools. We're fortunate to have parents who are leaders in the field. We've also added language to our enrollment contract to give priority to Cupertino residents when applications or otherwise equal, reflecting our ongoing commitment to serving the city of Cupertino. And finally, I'd like to share that on Thursday, October 30th, we'll be hosting our international festival, a celebration of our global culture, food, and traditions, led by our students and families. We would be absolutely delighted to welcome all of you, our city council members, to stop by and enjoy the festivities. I've left a few flyers with the clerk in case you'd like more details. At Tessellations, we deeply value being a part of Cupertino. We're not just located here, we are rooted here. Our goal is to continue contributing to the vibrancy and connectedness of this city through sharing our resources, opening educational access, innovation, and community partnerships. Thank you for your time and for your continued support of our school and our shared community.
Thank you, Lutheran. Next, we have Colonel John Swenson and Dennis Whitaker. Welcome. Will you be consolidating your time tonight, the two of you, speaking together, both providing comments?
We're both going to provide comments.
Okay, so you all have four minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Chow, members of the City Council. I'm John Swenson from DeAnza. I want to invite you and everyone in this room to the Cupertino Veterans Memorial for Memorial Day, which is always celebrated at Cupertino Veterans Memorial at 11:00 on the 11th, which of course was the armistice from the First World War. The Cupertino Veterans Memorial got its start right in these chambers with the City Council. I happened to be here that night when these young people came in and said that Matt Axelson, their schoolmate, had been killed in Afghanistan and had been awarded the Navy Cross, the second highest award for valor. And Mayor James at the time said, well, we'll do that, but let's talk about it. And out of that, and out of the City Council, came the Cupertino Veterans Memorial, which honors veterans and first responders. Our speakers this year, Major General Rob Ostenberg and, representing the first responders, Sheriff Bob Johnson, the sheriff of Santa Clara County. So we welcome you all to come and join us on the 11th. We will not have any rain this year, like we did last year. And Dennis is going to tell you a little bit about who's participating. I would mention that every school in Cupertino bought a paver, so they have a vested interest in the Cupertino Veterans Memorial.
And this year, we have Kennedy Middle School being the choir, following my band that I joined 24 years ago, bringing them down from the peninsula. We'll be performing from 10:00 to 10:45, so if you like a comedy act, I'm really good with my trombone spit valve. And then Kennedy Middle School will pick up and carry the ball from 10:45 until 11:00. Then they will perform the Star Spangled Banner. So we're looking forward to this event and hoping very much that our man upstairs gives us a good day instead of the drench we had last year. Thank you very much. And I thank Colonel Swenson for chairing this event for the last three-plus years. He's done an awesome job on our Veterans Day. Thank you very much for all coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maribot by Rozawa. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Chow, honorable council members, members of the public, and thank you for your service here and giving me opportunity to speak. I am here to echo our head of school, Lutheran Williams', message, but from parent perspective, I'm a resident at Cupertino. And I'm here to ask you, please expedite our CUP approval, increase our capacity to 425 students, so we have economies of scale to make ourselves more financially sustainable, because right now we don't have. And please remove our permit for events. Right now, we have a permit to get, to have only seven events, not per week, not per month, per year. And we want to build a vibrant community, and that would really go a long way to make our school a very important, valuable part of the Cupertino community. And here are four reasons why we think this decision would benefit the community. One, economic benefit. People like me who move to Cupertino, I work in Monterey, so I commute there, so my kids could walk to Tessellations. There are so many more families who are increasingly moving to Cupertino, so our kids could attend Tessellations. And school and families like us support local businesses. We love the city, we want to be a part of this community. Two, Tessellations provides unique public benefit. If you have a kid who are gifted, who have some learning differences like dyslexia or other kind of learning differences, our school provides that service that not a lot of other schools do. That's why we have families like us coming from all over the region. And this is, we are a private school, but we provide, we are nonprofit, and we provide unique public benefits that a lot of other schools don't. Three, we provide safe and attractive facilities. We walk at Tessellations School almost every evening with dozens of other local neighbors, with their dogs and children. It's wonderful. Tessellations has done an amazing job revitalizing the facilities, and now they added games like foosball and tennis, and neighbors get to play there, even in the evening, like in the dark, luckily the lights are on. So it's just a wonderful place for community to congregate. And lastly, I think Tessellations has proved itself as being a responsible and collaborative neighbor, going out of its way to reach out to neighbors, collaborate, come up with creative solutions for persistent problems like, you know, traffic that plagues the whole Bay Area. So just to conclude again, thank you for giving me a chance to speak, thank you for hearing me out. Again, our ask is please expedite our CUP renewal, expand, increase our capacity to 425 students, and remove the permit for events. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Chu, followed by Jenny, followed by Belinda Hantut. Welcome, Michael.
Good evening, council members. My name is Michael Chu, and I'm a Cupertino resident near the proposed housing site on Mary Avenue. Thank you for this opportunity to express my thoughts on this. I'm here to clearly oppose placing any additional housing at this location. Mary Avenue is a vital route for local families and students. My two boys bike to school here every day, and the street works as it is now. Adding another housing project would increase traffic and activity, bring more driveways, and raise new safety concerns for everyone, not just my family. This area has already seen a lot of development, and adding more will only put extra strain on our streets and infrastructure. I ask the council to consider the impact on current residents. There's a point where adding more congestion and construction is no longer reasonable. We need to preserve safe, functional neighborhoods, not make them more crowded and complicated. Please reject this proposal and help keep Mary Avenue as it is. Thank you for listening and for representing our community's concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jenny, followed by Belinda Hantut. Welcome, Michael.
Again, our ask is, please expedite our CUP renewal, expand, increase our capacity to 425 students, and remove the permit for events. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Chu, followed by Jenny, followed by Belinda Hantut. Welcome, Michael.
Good evening, council members. My name is Michael Chu, and I'm a Cupertino resident near the proposed housing site on Mary Avenue. Thank you for this opportunity to express my thoughts on this. I'm here to clearly oppose placing any additional housing at this location. Mary Avenue is a vital route for local families and students. My two boys bike to school here every day, and the street works as it is now. Adding another housing project would increase traffic and activity, bring more driveways, and raise new safety concerns for everyone, not just my family. This area has already seen a lot of development, and adding more will only put extra strain on our streets and infrastructure. I ask the council to consider the impact on current residents. There's a point where adding more congestion and construction is no longer reasonable. We need to preserve safe, functional neighborhoods, not make them more crowded and complicated. Please reject this proposal and help keep Mary Avenue as it is. Thank you for listening and for representing our community's concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jenny, followed by Belinda Hantut.
Thank you, council members, and I guess, and the audience. And I'll try to brought issue about the importance of the communication with the residents. So I will start with, okay. Before the pandemic, the mayor and the city manager were often seen in front of the city hall, if everyone remember. And the executive team maintained an open office schedule several days a week. However, since the onset of COVID-19, and the current mayor has primarily been seen, when the beginning of the COVID-19, the current mayor, actually, we still often see in the local events. Now, there's noticeably lack of communication, and the city hall doors also even locked. It's long overdue for this communication to be restored, and the locks should be removed. And at the very least, there should be weekly opportunity for open dialogue with the residents. And transparency and the communication are essential for the thriving community. And if you often see the newses, there's quite a bit of people, if they are remote working, they're actually doing another job or chores. And a lot of big companies, they already have return-to-the-office policies. There's a reason for those. So I just want to point here, and we like to see this open communication and come back to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Belinda Hantut. And then we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. There is one speaker. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Can I get the overhead put up on the, how do I request that, miss? Oh, there.
Yes, just place it there, and there.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I'll be really quick tonight. I wanted to speak a little bit about how people view housing and shelters. And I'm just trying to imagine how we can rethink about shelters, because what is it really? Isn't it, isn't it just a, it's just an apartment building, isn't it? I mean, that's all we're asking, is an apartment building. We have that MOU with the five cities, and I just want to keep bringing it up at the meetings to put our concerns forward, too, because the homeless really, you know, I hear about all these great things that the city does, and homeless people need that kind of thing, too, even if it's separate. This is an apartment building, but it's also a training center. We want to, part of the reason that people keep going back into homelessness is because we keep sending them out into the same world that got them there. We need to make them the solution. They need to be the solution. They need to be running the facility. They need to be trained to run this facility for themselves and make themselves self-sufficient, so that we're not relying on other people. We don't want to rely on other people. We have capabilities. I certainly do. We can, it's not just an apartment building and a training center, but it's a power generator. I mean, build something that uses wind. We have vertical wind fence that has, can generate massive amounts of power. Build these, build structures and infrastructure for us that makes us part of your community. And one thing I want to mention is that we want to give back to our community, too. You know, this is the simple, simple floor plan. Just, these modules can be connected, so you can make, the purple and the green are singles, and then there's doubles. You can expand it, collapse them. When we get rid of homelessness, you can make these permanent apartments. These are micro apartments, they're 300 square feet, so they're tiny. But we want to give back to the community, so I'm running out of time. So we would want to do something like this. We would want to, on the rooftop, make continental breakfast available to everybody, a cafe-style seating where you can sit and chat with, face-to-face with people, and not just online all the time. And at night, a lounge where you can look at the stars, and people can start dreaming again and dancing under the stars. I mean, this is something that we could bring to your community, not necessarily right in Cupertino, but you got that MOD, oh, MOU, so this is what I'm talking about here. So I think I'm almost out of time, so thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. And now we will move to the member of the public requesting to speak virtually, that is San Rao. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I'm speaking on behalf of myself only as a Cupertino resident. I would like to applaud and congratulate council and staff for clearing Bentley Psych and Alvis Drive. I invite all of you to take a walk or drive around that stretch, and you will see Cupertino in that stretch like I have never seen before. And it is a really beautiful site. I actually saw people cycling there today, and I don't think people could have cycled there safely in the past. And it's a, it's a wonderful testimony to what the city can accomplish when we actually work towards what residents are asking you to do. At the same time, I would request our ICIM Kapoor to please make sure that the CCD is operationally geared to deal with this situation. We still have an oversized vehicle that is occupying the senior center in the Memorial Park area, and it stays there all day. And code enforcement indicates that they cannot do anything, because they can only, you know, check between 10 and 6, 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, whereas, in fact, the ordinance update includes a condition that people are prohibited from living in oversized vehicles or living in any vehicles, and that can actually be checked for during the day. So I would request you to please make sure that code enforcement is appropriately trained on the new ordinance and its clauses, and that living in the vehicle can be checked for during the day. It is not a nighttime function only. I would also request you to work with the West Valley Patrol and make sure that West Valley Patrol is properly trained to take the action that is required. It is unclear from code enforcement what action could actually be taken between 10 and 6. And I have also heard that the ticket just goes to the back of the queue, and we have seen with the Fort Hill gas station that it can take over a year to solve gas station issues. And so I hope we don't have to wait a year to enforce the newly passed ordinance. Moving on, I want to bring your attention to a development that we have. It appears that we have a new inter-agency task force that has been proposed and is forming in the city. I don't know if council is aware of this. There is an inter-agency task force that is being proposed by our city transportation staff that involves the VTA, that involves our neighboring cities of San Jose and Santa Clara, that involves the DeAnza College, FHDA, and it involves the school districts. And I know we just exited the SED Calder study for concerns around having agencies outside of our city passing votes that have an impact on our city. And I'd like you to please look into this as a part of the Vision Zero. They say the Vision Zero action plan was approved by council, and this was in the fine print. So please look into that, agendize again, and relook at this, and if need be, cancel the task force. We need Cupertino decisions made by you. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, that was our final request to speak, this item.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. So I will pull Agenda Item 7, so that we will have a chance to hear from the city negotiator on the process of employee labor negotiation.
Mayor, did you mean 12?
Is it, not 7? Wait.
It's 12?
Sorry. Sorry, it's Item 12. Oh, okay, yeah, Item 12. Not 7. Oh, that's for the medical. Okay. Okay, anyone, any other? Okay, so we will hear public comment from, for the rest of the items.
Mayor, I see one request to speak virtually, from San Rao. Anyone else wishing to provide comments, please?
5 to 11, Item 5 to 11, yeah.
Okay. Welcome, San.
Do I, I need to make a motion to pull it, do I? Yeah. So, yeah, let me just make a motion to pull Item 12, and we will hear that right after consent. A second.
More second?
Yeah, I need a second. And then we'll vote. No, I'm sorry, I should have pressed yes.
Oh, okay. I will, Mayor, may I reset the vote?
Yeah, okay. Okay, cast the vote. Yes. Does that work? I need to press out many times. Yeah, yeah, mine isn't working either. Why is that? It doesn't take it.
Would you like me to take a roll call vote, Mayor?
Mm-hmm. How come it doesn't work? Okay, let's just do a roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Fruein?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Wong absent.
Okay, now we will hear comment, public comment, Item 5 to 11.
Okay, so Mayor, I have San Rao, followed by Nori. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I'm speaking on behalf of myself only as a Cupertino resident. I wish to comment on the SB 450 item, primarily because I could not comment in the previous meeting on this item. And I think it is important to recognize why it was necessary for allowing those exceptions to the entryway. I believe the extended discussion that occurred on the first reading of this ordinance was the ability for entryways to have flexibility to not face the main entryway of the property of the, of the street, in most cases. And the reason that we want to have that flexibility is because we are a community with a large number of Asian population, and there are reasons why people prefer to have a property that is east-facing and north-facing. I will give you an example. When the new Allen Townhomes property was built by the Fort Hill and Stevens Creek, the property that sold first was actually the property facing the gas station, which was surprising to the developer or the applicant. They would have expected the properties facing Stevens Creek to have sold first. Unfortunately, or fortunately for them, it was the gas station property that sold first. And the reason for that was it was an east-facing property. Many in the Asian community, and particularly the Indian-American community, prefer homes that have entryways that are facing east or north. It is important that our council members understand the cultural diversity that comprises of Cupertino residents. It is important that you understand that the east and north significance matters for the Indian community, and whether we are doing a remodel, or we are looking at homes that are being purchased, we want to be able to have that flexibility. And so it was therefore disappointing to see the conversation go the way that it did. I'm glad it eventually all played out. But I request you to please be culturally aware of the practices in the community, and also to further encourage that staff have the same understanding as well, because sometimes these conditions are too rigid to allow for the flexibility the community needs. Thank you for your time on this.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Nori. Welcome, Nori.
Hello. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I want to speak about Item 8, small cell tower. There are 19 small cell facility in 2020, but there are 142 small cell facility now, 90% beyond the Verizon. Small cell facility will be on every single electric pole soon. There is no regulation how many cell facility can be built in the city. So Verizon AT&amp;T can be built many as they want and wherever they want. City should have some type of regulation, how many they can build. Cell facility guideline was revised 2020. Increase the mailing public notification radius from 300 feet to 500 feet, and notification period from 14 days to 21 days, so that the resident can have more time to evaluate and send our comments. However, we found at last meeting that mailing public notification radius was back to 300 feet. We resident would like to keep 500 feet radius. And city engineer or planning department should have presented during, Hamid Edison was taking the measurement of maximum power density level or airway emissions, and reviewed before approved the activation report. In fact, I had been asking Hamid and Edison if I could watch during the measurement on the small cell facility near my house for two years, but denied. It was interesting to watch how the measurement was taken from bucket truck in front of the antenna, and how far from the ground the measurement was taken. In fact, my friends and I took measurement of small cell facilities and macro cell tower in city hall, city hall parking lot in 2020. Our result was much higher than activation report set, especially macro cell tower at the city hall parking lot was scary high. Machine, our machine was lighting up red and warning. At least, we are not leaving in the house behind a macro cell tower or townhouse across the street. The Verizon AT&amp;T mailed the notification, resident, when the cell facility was upgrading for to 5G, and measured and resubmit the activation report. Thank you very much for listening.
Oh, we lost, looks like we lost connection with Nori. And Nori's time was up. Next, we have Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members and staff. I'm speaking tonight on Agenda Item Number 6, the accounts payable. Earlier today, I sent an email, which is included in written communications regarding the city's legal expenses. Now, my one-page email may have gotten lost in the deluge of form letters with lots of misinformation regarding Mary Avenue, so I want to highlight my concerns. I'm very concerned about the cost of the city's legal services. In my email, I outlined the costs that have billed to the city for four and a half months of legal expenses. This means that the city is potentially liable for over $1 million of legal expenses in the year since the city contracted with the city attorney, Floyd Andrews. This is a substantial amount of money. The city attorney reports to the city council. Mayor Chow is responsible for signing off on legal bills. Why isn't council looking at these bills and means to reduce them? I ask that this council be more accountable for legal expenses. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. And Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item. No additional requests to speak on this item.
May I have a motion for 1 to 11, 5 to 11?
I'll move approval of Items 5 through 11.
Second.
Okay, let's try voting with the panel again.
Actually, the panel is now missing a council member, from my view, so I'm sorry. Can we?
Okay, let's just do a roll call.
Well, let me. Oh, okay. So, I'm sorry, so Fruein moved, and who seconded?
I did.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. The motion carries unanimously with Wong absent.
Okay, now we will hear item twelve. So first, um, city manager, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a brief statement, and I just wanted to clarify that labor contracts. Apologies. I just wanted to clarify that labor contracts negotiated between the city and its employee bargaining units are governed by a legal process. During the process, the council provides direction to city's negotiators in closed sessions. Once these negotiations are completed, the city council is then legally required to approve or reject the agreement in a public meeting, and it's part of its fiduciary and governance responsibilities. Most discussions do happen during closed sessions and by posting the agenda for public review and comments. Even on consent, the city provides transparency by including redlined versions of the draft successor MOU showing all of the changes. Lastly, I will just say that the, the recent salary adjustments were a result of the collective bargaining agreements that ensure fair and competitive pay for our workforce while maintaining fiscal responsibility. And our goal is to maintain a strong and stable organization that continues to provide high-quality service to residents while being mindful of taxpayer resources. So this does help city in retaining and attracting qualified staff. I understand that there is a desire to understand this process a little bit more and maybe for council to ask questions. And we do have Christopher Boucher, who served as the city's negotiator, available on Zoom to answer questions tonight. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I pulled this item because we had a couple of requests to pull it, pull it. And I, and I also realized that I did not know about the labor negotiation process when I was a member of the public. I learned it after I got on the council. So for many member of the public, they might be wondering how this all happened. And because all they see is an item on the agenda. So it might be helpful to explain a little bit is, uh, the unions we have. We have some employees that's not on union, but then they do, um, receive raise as part of that. And maybe Christopher, I think you probably will be better in explaining in the process. And we do do salary study to make sure that we are competitive. So can you, um, talk a little bit about that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. And good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. Apologize for not being able to join you in person tonight, and thank you for allowing me to participate over Zoom. The city does have a very robust labor negotiations process. And Mayor, like you said, that while this may be the first time the item is being presented to the council in a public session, agenda for approval and consideration. The process started well in advance of that, typically about six months prior to the commencement of labor negotiations, which for the city, the contracts expire June thirtieth. So staff have begun a very robust process of preparing for labor negotiations. There is a variety of factors that staff.
Before, before we go into that, it may be helpful if you first introduce what's your role? That's different from city staff. You are another city staff. So you're a contractor negotiator. What, what's that role? And the city, in each union have their own representative. Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry for jumping the gun. To members of the public, my name is Christopher Co. Boucher. I'm one of the attorneys at Boucher Law. And we, as a firm, we represent probably upwards of two hundred public agencies. And we serve as the agencies outside Labor Council, as well as at times, Labor Negotiator. I've had the good fortune of serving the city of Cupertino in the last several rounds of labor negotiations. And so kind of as a living, this is what we do, is we represent public agencies with their labor negotiations. So I'm not a city staff. I, I am a contractor to the city. And we're here to represent the city on a very limited scope agreement, which is to reach a labor agreement with the city's bargaining units. Like the mayor said, the city does have two bargaining units, which is the Cupertino Employees Association, which is the item before the council tonight. The city also has a separate group represented by operating engineers local three that represents employees within the OE three classification. There are unrepresented employees that don't belong in either union, and those employees' compensation are also set by the council.
And can you elaborate a little bit, what's the roles that's of, of the city staff that's in each of the union?
Yes, um, the CEA typically has your professional ranks. So your city planners, recreation staff, accounting staff, and so forth, those are represented pretty much by CEA. OE three has most of our public works classifications. So our public works employees are represented by CEA. And then there are other managerial classifications that are, that we call unrepresented employees. So they're in the unrep unit, which is not affiliated with any of the unions.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful. And then, yeah, then now you can continue on the negotiation process.
Thank you, Mayor. So my job is to work with city staff and for the city's team, right? I work primarily through the city manager's office to get directions, but also work with the city's director of administrative services, who oversees all the finances for the city. And Christina has a very robust module where we are able to calculate cost, determine impact to the city's budget based on any proposals that we receive, as well as any proposals the city makes, and then the city's human resources director, Vanessa Guerra. So we're primarily the team that represents the city at the bargaining table. And as I was mentioning, prior to the negotiations process, city staff does do a lot of research, and that includes comparable market data, what other agencies are offering, market trends. We look at the CPI for the Bay Area, and there's a historical trend that we look through. And in fact, I, I think we've gone back as far as two thousand and sixteen to sort of track the city's performance. So basically, what we have granted to our represented employees as compared to the CPI for the same corresponding period. And we were pretty much right on point over this extensive period of time. Also, the city does have a compensation philosophy where our employees are typically paid at the median of market, which means we survey all of the agencies that the city has historically surveyed, a lot of the neighboring cities and agencies and so forth. And the city's compensation is typically pegged at the median level. So we don't pay at the highest, we don't pay at the seventy-fifth percentile, we pay at the median level of all the comparable agencies. So those are all the factors, along with the city's financial abilities and so forth, and what we project in our revenue. And those are all factors that help inform, and those are information that staff analyzes and brings to the council and before we seek directions from the council or directions. Under state law, uh, the Brown Act, labor negotiations and directions for labor negotiations are given to the council to your negotiators, which is me in closed sessions. Obviously, it's just like every other negotiations the city has. Those information are confidential until we reach a tentative agreement. And that's to ensure that if the council gives me certain parameters, right? It doesn't mean that I turn around and, and provide the highest parameter right off the bat, but it's through the negotiations process, based on the parameters that are set by the council, that we conduct our negotiations. And then when it's time that the, the union is, uh, has reached an agreement with the city, we call that a tentative agreement because it's not binding to the city until the city council has an opportunity to present it to the public, which is the forum tonight, for the public to review everything that we've done. And that's why there's a lot of attachments to the presentation item tonight, both the redline version of the changes, the staff report, as well as the clean version of the proposed agreement. So the public has the ability and the right to review our assessment, our analysis, and an opportunity to provide comments to the council. I will note that the item before the council tonight, CEA is the last group that has reached an agreement. And so the agreement with CEA is identical to the agreement that was reached with operating engineers that was presented to the council earlier in the year. And it's also the same as the terms and conditions that are granted to all employees of the city. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions you or the council may have.
Thank you so much. That's very, so the, also that negotiation is not only salary, also benefits and number of holidays, right, or other factors? So this whole entire benefit package?
Yes, Mayor. And under state law, anything related to wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment are all subject to the labor negotiations process. So like you said, it's, it's comprehensive, although this time there are no changes to the holiday schedule. So there's no increases in holidays, just changes to base pay, uh, pretty much over the three-year period to, to try to correspond with what we think the CPI will be. One-time, uh, non-pensionable lump-sum payment. And then the changes to healthcare primarily has to do with keeping up with the pace of healthcare cost. The city does use a cap model where we cap the percent, the percentage of increases that the city will pick up. So if the increases do exceed what the city's cap is, the employees will, will pay the difference for that.
How often do we do the negotiation?
Since I've been involved in the city and I've been involved in your last several rounds, we always try to reach a longer-term contract. The reason why is it does provide certainty for the city, provides predictability for your finance team to be able to forecast your labor cost. And also, frankly speaking, labor negotiations, the entire process takes a lot of staff time, and it's costly to hire, right, it, it takes money to hire an outside negotiator every time. So we always try to reach a three- or four-year agreement for the city when we can achieve those agreements. And the item before the council tonight is a three-year agreement.
Thank you so much. That's really helpful. I think I know all the answers, but that's after so many rounds of negotiation I learned. And we have a light agenda tonight, so I thought I'll take this chance to inform the public about the process. So then, well, any other questions from the council members that you think the public might be willing to know? Even if something you already know? Yeah?
Okay, thank you. There was a, a letter from a member of the public that was suggesting that we have a reduction in force and a, um, a reduction of some of the, um, the leadership structure. And they were discussing how that you, how we have a director and an assistant or a deputy director for many departments. When you, we, you pull up the, um, the unrepresented employees for the city, that's where those positions lie. So that would not be something that was in either the OE three or the CEA negotiations. And also, could we clarify what is council's authority regarding directing the city manager to, who would be in these positions? How many of these positions that we would have? If we could hear a little bit about that? And then also how those unrepresented employees' salaries are determined?
I will attempt in answering initially, and then Christopher, if you can jump in as well to augment my response. So Vice Mayor, you're, you're right, is in most of the positions that you mentioned would be under the unrep agreement, as we call that. And typically, if, you know, if, if, if the city manager, if we're adding positions, if the city's adding new positions, that usually comes to council for approval, if there's a new classification that's being added. Beyond that, for organizational structure and operations, if we're onboarding staff or hiring people in existing positions, that's typically the city manager's decision. And I will turn it over to Christopher to talk about how the unrep agreement is structured in terms of the other two unions and what the council's role in that might be.
Thank you. I think the city manager stated it very well in terms of the, the city's process. As far as setting compensation and other terms and conditions of employment for the other groups, historically, the city has aimed for consistency among all of its employees. And the way we look at setting those compensation philosophy, right, it's, it's that it's one team. So to the extent we can achieve equity across the board for all of your represented groups, as well as your unrepresented employees, that is always the goal. And in this case, the item before the council tonight, that's why we mentioned that the CEA agreement is the same as OE three, as well as for the unrepresented employees. Unrepresented employees by nature, and, and as councilmember Moore has stated, they don't, they're not a bargaining unit, so the council does set the direction, as well as the compensation in terms and conditions of employment for those employees, because we don't have a bargaining obligation with them under state law. Typically, we would also try to seek consistency. So in this case, when the agreement was reached with OE three earlier this year, the council authorized the same terms and the same percentage increases for those employees. And, and that's typically kind of the historical process that we followed as well, is that unrepresented employees typically will follow whichever group reaches the agreement. And then typically, based on that pattern, we would try to reach the same agreement with the other group. In the past, we've typically gotten agreements with both of your represented employees at the same time. So we typically brought both of the CEA and OE three agreements to the council at once. This time, just because of scheduling and other factors, there were more discussions with CEA. But in the end, we were able to reach the same agreement, and that's why it's being brought to you as a standalone item tonight. And I'm happy to answer any other questions the council may have.
Thank you. And I think regarding positions, usually it's added or removed through the budgeting process. For example, um, the city manager proposed to, to add a deputy director for proxy rec. But it's true that, it seems when we are looking at the salary comparison, have we ever looked at the comparison of the unrep employees? Which I'm not sure. I think we are usually comparing.
I can get that answer too, but I believe we do have that salary data.
So, yeah, okay. So maybe we can, and then like Vice Mayor said, we, if we can have, it's beyond probably this topic that if we, we could, we could consider this part of our budgeting process for next year, if you would like to review potentially, how are we compared with other city in terms of, do they all have director, deputy director in all the department? A number of, yeah, unrep employees that it might be a good exercise for the budgeting process. Yeah. Okay, um, let's go to public comment.
Mayor, I currently, oops. I see one member of the public requesting to speak virtually, San Rao. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and councilmembers. I'd like to thank you for the extended discussion on this topic and for educating members of the public on the process that is followed. I think that is very helpful. I would also like to, uh, ask that, yes, everything you've said is, is understood and acknowledged. And yet, the facts are that if you go back and look at what was the employee compensation and benefits for a city of our size from twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen to today, twenty twenty-five? Twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, we were a city of over sixty thousand population. Today, we are a city of fifty-seven to fifty-eight thousand population. We have declined in population. And over that same period, we were spending twenty million, a little over twenty million, on employee compensation and benefits. And today, that number without these increases is at over thirty-five million. And so as, as the council, you have a fiscal responsibility to us. And so as the council, you have a fiscal responsibility to us residents to control the costs of running the city, because you have passed a cost recovery policy that passes these increases onto us directly. And even without these increases, we have seen over 10% raises on fees on residents over the past two years. And with these hikes, we expect to see more double-digit raises in fees coming up again next year. So while we can agree that the process is what it is, and you are limited in what you can do, there are things that you can do. And firstly, given what you just described as the process, you could have had a public agenda item in open session before you had your closed session with the negotiators to open the item to the public for input and to seek input from the public, because your input to the negotiator should be informed by public input and sentiment. And hopefully, you recalled all of the input you had previously on these double-digit increases that residents are facing. It is not sustainable, and we have other tax hikes coming from the county and elsewhere. And so I ask that you please think about all the livers under your control, which are not that many. Clearly, you have very limited livers today, especially given you have already gone through these negotiations. It is not an expectation that unrepresented employees that are at the leadership level should get the same hikes as the union employees. I am fully in support of these hikes for union employees. I am fully in support of our field and frontline staff. They deserve everything they need to get. However, looking at the compensation for our leadership, these are salaries that would compete with the highest salaries you would see in the tech industry. And the tech industry has not seen pay hikes in years, let alone a 5% or 3% hike. And on top of that, you have a 33% hike in the total compensation for healthcare.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Rota Frye. Welcome, Rota.
Hi, good evening. Thanks so much for the presentation. Much appreciated. And I want to echo San's commentary about just our costs are getting out of control. Agree, we need to compensate staff appropriately. However, when we do look at Open Gov, the cost of admin has just skyrocketed. I've mentioned that multiple times in going to the audit committees and elsewhere. And I think that that's something that we need to look at. And appreciate the mayor bringing this forward and shedding some light on the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Rota. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Okay. Thank you. Any comment from council members?
No.
No? Or any information request you would like to see? Okay. So then, may I have a motion?
Moore, I move the recommended action.
Second.
Okay. Great. Then let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously with Wong absent.
Great. Next, item 13. We have the study session to review Arts and Culture Commission's recommendation to the municipal code standards for art in public and private development, including the standards in municipal code and developing an art in Lufi policy.
Thanks, Mayor. For this item, we have community development department staff that will go through the presentation. And I just want to mention, we did issue a desk item today with a few questions that came in, so you have that. I believe the Arts Commission Chair and Planning Commission Chair are both present either on Zoom or in person. And if I can just make a quick comment here, there was a letter from the Arts and Culture Commission Chair that was included as an attachment. This is an oversight, and the recommendation from commissions usually included in the staff report, so I just want to apologize for any confusion it may have caused. It does highlight, though, that, one, we, you know, what we might want to be aware of when more than one commission is hearing one item or the same item. And then, two, currently, there's no formal process on how commission chairs sometimes, or especially individual council members, can request items to be part of an agenda item. And if council wishes to consider providing direction to staff in the future, I would encourage us to look into that. Thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to Luke, to John Martier.
Good evening. I think Kirsten, if you can start the presentation. Thank you, John Martier, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. I am also the Arts and Culture Commission's liaison, and I've been working with the commission on formulating revisions to the municipal code, as well as the Art and Lufi policy, or establishing Art and Lufi policy as directed through the process, through the council work program item from 2024, 2025. But we'll get into that discussion in a little bit later. So again, this is a study session to review the Arts and Culture Commission's recommendation to municipal code standards for art in public and private development, including standards that are codified in municipal code, as well as developing Art and Lufi policy. Next slide. Thank you. So a quick background, again, this presentation is going to reflect what's already been written in the staff report. So the policy for art in the city, particularly when it comes in public spaces, we can trace back to March 1, 2005, the city council approved the resolution as listed above on the presentation. And this is called the City of Cupertino's Public Art Program Guidelines for Selection of Public Art. And this is not on private development, but this is rather how to select art that goes into public spaces. This policy is currently still in place and still utilized if and when the city does plan to purchase or receive as donation any public art to be placed in public spaces. See, first approved, this original required artwork in public and private development ordinance in the municipal code in 2009. And this was a way to codify a general plan policy that required any development that was over 50,000 square feet to have up to 0.25% of the valuation, up to $100,000, capped at $100,000, to provide art onsite. The last major modification to this ordinance was in 2018, where the council approved what we have today, which is removal of that $100,000 cap, placing a 1% in Lufi on private developments and a 1.25% in Lufi for, I'm sorry, a 1% valuation of art onsite and a 1.25% in Art and Lufi if the developer chooses not to place art onsite, subject to approval of city council based on a recommendation of the Arts and Culture Commission. I do want to add, it wasn't in this staff report that any development that's over $100 million, the Lufi is in 0.9%. The general plan also has many policies, which I won't go over, and strategies as well. They are listed in the staff report, but they are quite numerous and do discuss where our preferred locations and how, as an example, art can be used to help with the economic development of the city, too. Next slide, please. So again, city council for the fiscal year of 2024, 2025, added this council work program item under Quality of Life. And it was for the Arts and Culture Commission, excuse me, to revisit the municipal code standards for art in public and private development, including the standards in the municipal code and developing an Art and Lufi policy. The direction appeared to be very broad for the Arts and Culture Commission. So when staff presented this item, starting in 2024, it was kind of a blank slate for them to look at what we can do with the existing policy, as well as the existing municipal code, to reflect a few things. And the way it was framed, next slide, please. Kirsten, thank you. Was to look at what we have currently existing, which is Chapter 19148, which is the Required Artwork in Public and Private Developments, which is the municipal code chapter that city staff has used to guide developers into how to design their art onsite, as well as what the expectation is for the art, you know? If it's, as an example, if it's located on Stevens Creek Boulevard, you know, the visibility of the art piece, you know, 100 yards, you know, the expectation that any private art should follow the council policy for the guidelines for selection of public art as well. So as when typically done, when looking at or modifying the municipal codes, it is typical, as was done originally throughout the last 15 years since we've had this codification of the general plan policy originally, we look at other jurisdictions to see, how do we compare to other jurisdictions when we look at this? You know, there was an attachment of comparators to the staff report, but there are five or six other jurisdictions that we looked at as well that didn't have any policy whatsoever, such as Santa Clara, San Jose, I believe Campbell, Los Gatos at the time, too, don't have any policy, which, you know, the selected cities that were used in that table do have some type of policy. So when we looked at, when we did the research, we looked at four things. The art requires for private development, how do cities treat the Lufi payments contrast that we're providing onsite art pieces? Do these cities have separate art funds, which currently Cupertino does not? And how do they distribute the funds? What limits are imposed, such as what limits are imposed and how the funds are used, as well as what programs, projects can cities subsidize with funding? Are they strictly physical art pieces? Are they allowed to do murals? Can you fund a master planning, some type of arts master plan with this, with the funds that you take in with in lieu payments? And finally, who are the decision-making bodies? Who decides whether a developer can take, can pay in Lufi or whether they need to provide the art onsite? So when we looked at this, and next slide, please. Thank you. We, myself, staff liaison, presented the findings to the Arts and Culture Commission multiple times. And each time we presented it, the four times, it was ongoing development of a new policy, as well as the modifications to the municipal code. So in conclusion, in the culmination of all those four meetings, the Arts and Culture Commission approved an in lieu payment option that the, in that, so the, I'm sorry, let me step back. So currently, the municipal code requires that the, if a developer wants to do the in lieu payment option, the Arts and Culture Commission is the recommending body to council. And council ultimately approves that in lieu payment option. What the Art and Culture Commission said, that we just, they would be the approval body rather than just a recommendation body, as they are the approval body for any onsite art. They also decided to recommend that the in lieu payment and valuation are consistent with each other, so instead of having 1.25% in Lufi, it would also, it would be down to 1% fee. And that goes along with their idea that in the municipal code currently, the code states that the Lufi payment is actually discouraged, and that's one, that's part of the language that they've also stricken out as well, recommended to strike out as well, as part of the recommendation to council when updating the municipal code. Part of the policy is also to create and maintain a separate art fund. And again, the art funding would be very broad as part of the recommendations, such as use to develop an arts master plan. Other recommendations could be expansion of funding to art programming beyond physical art, which would be primarily what they believe as well to be the focus of the physical art portion, but also be broad enough that they would include those others. City council would be maintained as a decision-making body upon the recommendation of the Arts and Culture Commission for any allocation of funding. Next slide, please. And again, what was attached was the redline version of the municipal code table 1912, which authorized the approval authorities, as well as 19148, the Required Artwork in Public and Private Development modification. And also, what was attached to the staff report was the amended policy, the current policy, which adds the art fund, how it should be spent, guidelines to what percentage of the art fund should be spent on any type of staffing or consultant work when developing or when approving a specific art piece. Next slide, please. Because certain changes to municipal code could affect projects, therefore, any land use decision as a courtesy and as an informational item, this was presented to the Planning Commission on September 23rd. And with the understanding that they would receive the, they would receive the presentation and as well as the Art and Culture Commission's recommendation, the Planning Commission did motion 32 for the following three comments to be passed on to city council. One would be to, contrary to the Arts and Culture Commission's recommendation, to retain the 1.25% in Lufi. Yes, to create a separate art fund, but only used for the creation of public art, basically limited to physical art, rather than to the arts master planning, a master plan for art or any type of, or scholarships or whatever else. And that the council maintains final discretion on all approvals. Next slide, please. So the next step is that with council direction, staff will prepare amendments to municipal code section 1912, 19148, as well as any proposed modifications to draft policy for council consideration. Again, this policy, this municipal changes, this item in general is really subject to discretion of council. There are no state requirements for an Art and Lufi policy. There are no state requirements for any art policy whatsoever, as evident by the fact that many state jurisdictions, particularly even larger ones like Santa Clara and San Jose, don't have art requirements on private development at all. So this is really, I hate to say, but blank slate for, no, I should say, I hate to say, but I do want to remind, this could be considered a blank slate for council to give concrete directions for staff, as well as the Arts and Culture Commission, if deemed so, and to set parameters for any modifications that you see fit. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Yeah.
Council member Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a procedural question, and maybe the city manager can answer it. Why is this a study session? Why isn't it an action item?
That's my request. Yeah. Because like the staff has mentioned, the work program description was very broad, so there was no direction from the council to the Art Commission at all on exactly what we want to revise. And the reason I think it was broad is this is not, that was not direct, an item the council requested to add to the work program. Back in, I think, last year, it was after the council already adopted our work program at one meeting, the commissioners proposed that multiple, like seven or eight items to be added to the work program. This was one of them. So the description came directly from the Art Commission themselves. It was broad. And so I thought the council really needs to give direction on what exactly we want to see. We haven't had that chance, so we should have a study session first to hear what everyone thinks before we have prescribed the policy, that otherwise, we would have a first reading of a policy that we have never seen or discussed. Yeah. So that's why I requested, let's do a study session first.
So this would lead to a first reading and then a second reading, so it's a three-part process?
So maybe we have give direction to staff, and then they will prepare the first reading based on what the council decide, yeah. So maybe we have give direction, uh, to staff and then they will prepare the first reading based on what the council decide. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Vice mayor?
Thank you for the report. Thank you, mayor. Um, so the Fine Arts Commission began, it looks like in 1987 and they had, looked like at the very start, they had more than five members, maybe, maybe seven to nine, um, comprised that, uh, commission and it's my understanding that there wasn't, um, a fee imposed until 2009. So I'm kind of wondering what the role of that original Fine Arts Commission was from 87 to 2009, if they, uh, weren't looking at, I'm seeing that they, they looked at, um, some of the, uh, cultural events that would be happening, made some, it looked like they made some input on, what, what kinds of, uh, presentations or, you know, shows that they would be having, um, and some of the exhibits. Have you had a chance to research what the, the prior commission was working on?
Unfortunately, not going back to 1987. Uh, I didn't get that far back in my research, I apologize, um, you know, but I, I will confirm that, you know, there was a, a fee for development, prior to 2009. It just wasn't codified until 2009, but there was a general plan policy that had that 0.25% for developments or 50,000 square feet.
Okay. Um, and with regards to, uh, the general plan for arts and culture, it does, I do see the strategy to maintain and update an ordinance requiring public art in public as well as private projects of a certain size. So do we, does our ordinance require public art in public projects? Um, cause like I'm seeing that for, you know, I believe it's San Jose, but there was, um, in the answers for the, the, the questions on this item, Palo Alto was mentioned. So did we, did we pull together that part of the ordinance? Cause it's a little confusing seeing, um, the way ours is worded.
Yeah, you know, the, yeah, I agree. It's, the title says public and private art, but, but the focus of that ordinance is really for private art on, art on private developments, excuse me. See, so I'm getting confused a little bit as I explain this. But, um, you know, there is no, but referring back to your Palo Alto example, there's nothing in our, um, municipal code that requires a certain percentage of CIP projects to have any type of, um, like in Palo Alto, it's 1% of certain CIP projects. And then they give the example of plazas and, um, buildings and to have a certain, that 1% be dedicated to, um, art.
Okay. And that, and that 1% is of the construction cost, which doesn't include the land. So for, um, for instance, for the, well, the Valco project, because it came in before there was an increase, but that would just be for the construction and not the, the land value of that particular project. When we look over at, say, Main Street, um, and they had a whole, like, art program, um, that, that I was looking at, and I, and I couldn't determine if they had built everything out, if they had installed, there were a couple of things that I, I can't recall seeing, but they maybe are tucked away somewhere. But they have, I don't know, a good, a good seven at least, um, of public exhibits there. Did they go over their, um, required amount at that site?
Very much so. So they, at that time, were capped at $100,000 and I believe they're, I believe they probably spent somewhere between half a million to a million dollars on their art pieces.
Yeah, yeah. So I was trying to collect all of the, um, the, the public art and I prepared a document. It's in a rough draft form, but I came up with about 30 pieces, not including the murals that we, the big murals that we have in the, in the city hall, and I'm sure there's other pieces. There, I had been told that there was a book that someone had made, perhaps two different versions of it, showing the public art, and we do have the art tours. Do, at, at this time, do we have a complete collection to know what we, what we have?
So staff has found, uh, a prior, uh, list that's been collected. It's, it's been within the, you know, the internal drive. I, I will opine that this is one of those commissions that been passed around like a hot potato between departments, unfortunately, so, made, so in, in that transition, I think it's been to CDD, then to Parks and Rec, then the city clerk, I think, was the oversight, then back to CDD, you know, so, again, in that transition, things get lost. Um, you know, I think in my supplemental or my desktop item, you know, myself, uh, I've been, I've been working with IT to kind of restart that art, art tour, see what we can do. I think it ends at 2018, 2019, so it doesn't have a lot of the Main Street and all of the private development pieces. So I think that's something that I, I will focus on getting done by summer of 2026, if I can, God willing. You know, and, um, the list that I did find did have a lot of the, the city hall, um, art pieces, such as the murals, as well as the Morion and, uh, and whatnot.
Okay, thank you. And, and when I looked through the resources online in the records, I did see that Peter Max had done a painting of the, um, Morion, um, that we have there. And you could take a copy of the Cupertino, um, career down to their, uh, their Santana Row, uh, book signing, and you could have Peter Max autograph your, um, the, the cover of that, the newspaper, and I thought that was kind of cool. Do you feel that planning, uh, the planning department is the right location for, um, this commission?
I believe we're the only jurisdiction that has community development, uh, be the liaisoning of, of this commission. I, I will say personally, I enjoy this commission, so I'm more than happy to keep going with it. They're a great group, very, you know, I spent, uh, I guess, Saturday with them on, on a holiday weekend. It was fantastic. And so, um, you know, I'm more than happy to, to be there. I, I think, you know, what other jurisdictions, Sunnyvale, they actually have full-time art staff, um, as well as Palo Alto and, and whatnot. So I think that's what other jurisdictions have, um, that we don't. So I think, you know, typically it's been, you know, I think Parks, the Parks and Rec would probably be more appropriate if you're going to look at consistency across the Bay Area. But that being said, you know, I'm, you know, I'm more than happy to maintain being the liaison of this department.
If I could just add one thing, I think one of the issues too is that community development, we're essentially charged with permitting and oversight of private property. And public works and parks would be dealing with public property. Our code addresses both public and private art in the same section, even though most of the discussion tonight is, I guess the most accurate way to phrase this would be, we're talking about publicly visible art on private property is really what we're talking about. Like the San Jose and Palo Alto examples are public properties, public art, 1% of your construction budget goes towards it. Most of the discussions we have are concerning private developers having publicly visible art. So, uh, kind of a long way of answering, I don't know where this would fit neatly into a department because it straddles public and private sites.
I, I would think that the, the educational background for the planners would be perhaps the best fit. I would actually want to see it extended to, if there were to be, um, and there have been, um, decorative bicycle racks installed that, that, that that would be part of the, um, the, something that would be weighed in on, um, to see about compatibility of design. Also, since we've requested that the solar structure at Memorial Park, um, be compatible with the, um, the stone lanterns and the, um, the gingerbread, um, on the, on the gazebo, it's, it's a challenge to try to make these things all, all fit together. I would want, um, to have that type of a project weighed in on as well, even though it gets into public works, I would want to have another, another group, you know, kind of mull that over. And what do you think about that?
I, I think it's, I think it's fair. I mean, that's the direction of council to have, you know, planning more involved in the selection. I mean, if that's where you're going with, if I'm understanding you correctly, more into the review of, of public art on public property, you know, that's.
Or possibly the commission.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Um, council member Fruin is next. Okay.
So just to clarify my understanding here, um, looking at the recommendation that is coming forward, I think from, from both commissions, it appears that right now, if a developer were to propose a project, that the developer would have the discretion to choose whether to build onsite or fee out. Is that correct?
They have the discretion. They can choose which one. Um, so the Arts and Culture Commission's recommendation is to allow them be the final body to decide whether an INLU payment is, is appropriate. Currently, as, as the ordinance is written, is that, um, for if the developer wants to do the onsite art, our ACC, I'll use that term, uh, would be the final approval body. If they want to do the INLU, they would be the recommending body to council to be the approval body of the INLU fee, which is kind of goes in that vein of discouraging the art INLU fee payment and encouraging the onsite art.
Got it. But one way or the other, council would still have appellate authority, yes?
Uh, if it's, yes, correct.
Okay. One thing I would like the city attorney's office to examine is, is given that, that that seems to take the discretion entirely away from the developer to choose as to whether that is going to present a, a problem for us, because that would make us an outlier. And in every single one of these other instances, it appears the developer has the option, uh, of choosing. That's, that's really the only recommendation coming out of the, the Arts and Culture Commission that I, I have a concern about. Because the, the less discretion that is there and the less that that discretion is, is clarified by some standards, the more that this starts to look like an exaction or a tax than it does like a land use regulation. So that's, that's my concern. In looking through the, the comparison list, and I want to thank you for having put it all together. It makes this whole much, much easier to try to review. I'm not seeing an example of any city that is structured the way that ours is, where the fee for INLU is higher than the fee for onsite. So can you maybe shed some light on why that might be?
Yeah. So, you know, the, the, the language for the discouragement goes all the way back to the original ordinance in 2009. And so we're, we're actually not only the only city that probably has a higher INLU fee, we're also the one that actively, you know, ordains that, you know, or codifies our discouragement. So it's really just kind of, you know, when we, we, we meet with developers and they say, well, we want to fee out, we say, well, this is, you know, you're discouraging and you have to pay more and, and your process is doubled on top of it, which means more time and the, the, and, you know, cause I think, I think my, our experience is that, you know, developers want to get certificate of occupancy as soon as possible. And so they are, they're, they're, they're willing just to, to do the, the statuary or whatever, uh, art piece onsite. We had an interesting conversation with the city of Sunnyvale because they are the, the exact opposite of us when it comes to INLU fees and, and, and contribution to onsite art. Where their, um, their onsite art is 2%, but their INLU is 1.1%. And, you know, my conversation with the, um, with the, uh, the staff person who, who oversees the art in the city says, well, you know, it was, it came about because, uh, most development was north of Caltrain or north of El Camino, kind of out of the public eye and whatnot, and not easily accessible by the public. You know, who are walking by or whatnot. So they, the council, their council at the time wanted to ensure that public art pieces were places that the public had access to, publicly visible, city hall, parks, wherever else. So that is the rationale for how they did it. So knowing this, you know, again, going back to the Arts and Culture Commission's recommendation was, you know, just, hey, let's, let's, let's maintain, let's allow council and the commission control of, um, the decision-making or approval of the, of the fees and whatnot, but at the same time, not actively discourage, you know, the INLU fee and kind of give the city more, um, discretion as to, to have a, a pot of money to, to spend on public art.
Got it.
Okay. So a question to follow up on vice mayor's, um, so art commission was, was there ever a time it was staffed by Parks and Rec Department?
A few times, yes. It, it's like, it's gone back and forth. And so I believe that, Ben, you remember, was it 2020 that it came over?
I, I believe it came to community development just before the pandemic. Uh, prior to that, it was with the Parks, Parks Department.
Actually, I think it's 2022, I'm sorry.
And so you said the, Sunnyvale is not included in, in the table, right?
It is.
It is, yeah.
Yes.
So how did, so you choose this table way? I see Berkeley, Belmont, Los Altos and Palo Alto. Is there another table?
If you go Berkeley, Belmont, Redwood City, Sunnyvale, San Mateo, Los Altos, Palo Alto. Yeah. It's after Redwood City.
This is weird.
It's photo nine.
So as you're looking, if I could add one thing, Parks and Rec does manage the artists awards though. So that was, not everything transferred over to CDD.
Okay. Um, let me share. Okay, here. So I looked at the functions and the powers and function for art in, for art commission. Most, I wonder if, um, they are doing actually some of this that's written here. Keep current and potential arts and culture activities. Provide the means for coordination for arts and culture groups or facilities within the community. Maintain an inventory of facilities available for related arts and culture within the community. And provide information to the community relating to art. Are they doing any of this right now?
I think they would, I think they would love to do a lot of this, but we have no funding. I think that's the, that's the problem.
But, but these fits seems to be more into the Parks and Rec. Is it because it's under, it's staffed by planning now there, so it's, there is less?
I, I, I don't think it has to do with, I, I, not so much about who's, who's the liaison, um, who are, who's staffing the, the, the commission, I think is rather, you know, is there funding to, to have staff or to assist or, or to, or to provide for, for, um, these activities?
Yeah. However, so among all these items, the only thing that relate to public art is H, foster the development of public art within the community. That doesn't mean it's with development project. It's just public art within the community, which is like what they have been doing with public art in unexpected places. And then J is interaction between arts and business. Nowhere does, do I see the, they have the power to set art INLU fee or even recommend that to the council. And I, I think we have had a lot of powers and function of commissions and the staff at times tend to interpret that very narrowly. So in this case, uh, we are having art commission making recommendation to the council on something that's not stated in their powers and function.
Every ordinance that's, this ordinance has always been recommended by the council, by, by the, back to the Fine Arts Commission. So in 2009, they, it was their recommendation that started this municipal code, as well as in 2018, it was their recommendation directly to council, uh, for this as well.
Yeah, but I mean, like you have said, um, percentage of art fee is part of the development standard. And that should be under planning. And what I see is, uh, art commission is making the recommendation and the staff is only as a courtesy presented to the planning when I think that's a function that should fall under planning. An art commission is supposed to just help with selection of art, not with setting the fee.
When you say planning, meaning planning commission or?
Planning commission.
It's, 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 I'm, I'm just going off precedent and how this municipal code, uh, chapter was started and how it's been amended throughout the last 15 years has always been the Fine Arts Commission.
But nowhere does it say they should set the fee or make a recommendation to the council on the fee.
I think if I, I could just add one.
I think if I could just add one thing, is I think what the Arts and Culture Commission was trying to do was, the language in the current municipal code discourages the payment of the fee. That's actually in the heading that says that the not providing the art is discouraged. So I think a way of leveling the playing field between paying the fee or providing the art would be to have the fee match the cost of actually providing the art.
Mm-hmm.
That would be one way to do it.
Okay, I, to me, I just find it's inconsistent. Sometimes we interpret the powers and function narrowly, and sometimes we interpret that broadly for different commission.
If I can add something too, so, you know, chapter 1912, which is the municipal code's chapter for demonstration of certain approvals of projects and whatnot, if you go under the public art and architectural site approvals, it's actually part of your attachments as well, the red line chapter, you know, the Arts and Culture Commission has authority to either be the final approval body and/or the recommending body on whether it's public art or art onsite and any art in-lu fee. And the planning commission does not have any authority with this, even as an appellate body. So, and, you know, we could interpret that as being that the planning commission has, really has no purview over art onsite as well.
Mayor, can I, I was just going to suggest, you know, if there is interest in having a discussion on, you know, where the arts commission could be, you know, whether it's staffing levels or things like that, I would appreciate an opportunity to kind of look into the history of it.
We need to clean up the code, there's, if that should belong to the art commission, then the powers and function should include that. So there is some inconsistency then. Yeah. Okay, so any other question? Or we go to public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, I have, I see four requests to speak, two from in community hall and two remotely.
And more?
Three from in community hall, Kieran Rora and Patrick Quoc and Jean Bedord.
Yeah, okay.
So Kieran, would you like to?
So thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, city council members, staff and the public. So I am, my name is Kieran Rora, I am the Arts and Culture Commission chairperson, and today I want to share our, what I'm speaking is on behalf of the commission. So I am providing my comments on obviously the current topic. So the question is, why are we even having these discussions for the history? So the public storage project was the only project since 2009 to pay the art in-lu fee rather than create public art, just that we understand from where we started. This prompted a discussion in 2023 on what the-
Excuse me, sorry, in our video, would you please, I'm sharing my screen, would you please share?
This prompted a discussion in 2023 on what the process should be for using art in-lu funds. There was no process or policy at that time. In May 2023, council unanimously approved using the art in-lu fund for pieces at Joliment Park All-Inclusive Playground. What I have in the picture here is the public storage, the picture below, that's where the art piece could have been installed if there was no art in-lu fund or that option. But the decision was made to use the funds instead for the Joliment Park All-Inclusive Playground, which is, of course, has been much appreciated by the community. The process on how the Arts and Culture Commission came to this recommendation, based on diligence, amount of time and effort, so the Arts and Culture Commission had four public meetings in 2024 and 25 to review the staff findings, deliberate and collect public feedback. In the review process, you've actually already heard from the staff, we have looked at the jurisdictions analysis of Berkeley, Belmont, Redwood City, Sunnyvale, San Mateo, Los Altos and Palo Alto. We also received feedback from SV Creates, this is the arts organization designated by the Santa Clara County to support arts in local municipalities. And why is our commission recommending 1% as for the art in-lu option? By not explicitly discouraging the art in-lu fee, we will be able to better allocate resources to where it will have the largest benefit for our community. For example, as currently written, the art in-lu policy encourages developers to build public art even if the location is not very accessible or the piece is small with marginal benefit to the community. Moving to 1%, and the commission as approver will bring Cupertino on par with the majority of the neighboring municipalities. Currently Cupertino is the exception, we also heard that from the staff report. Public Storage was the first project in 15 years to opt for art in-lu fee. Maintaining the current language could mean we will not have another art in-lu project for another 15 years. Why the commission recommends keeping art fund usage open to both physical art and programming. Art in-lu funds would go into the art fund and not the general fund, which is the current policy. Council decides on how to allocate those funds. It is advantageous to keep the language in the policy open to include both physical art and other art programming, so that council has the option to use it for other art programming in the future. Nowhere in the policy are we recommending that it must be programming. Thank you very much.
Thank you, that was your time. Next, we have Patrick Quoc, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Patrick.
Hi. Good evening, members of the city council, Madam Mayor and city staff. My name is Patrick Quoc, a longtime resident of Cupertino, and I'm here to speak of the discussions on some amendments to the Resolution 05-040. You know, historically, the Cupertino residents have very strong passions for fine arts. On that basis, the city council unanimously approved exactly about 20 years ago, that resolution to support fine arts. And also, the city set a good example by having its own logo, the Marion sitting outside to display fine arts, and I take pride in wearing it in my lapel pin, the logo. And I found it a little bit troublesome about the recommendation by staff in making some changes. There's no rationale of why they decreased the allocation from 1.25% to 1%. And secondly, by setting up a special fund, most likely go to a consultant to do the studies, and it just defeats the whole purpose of fine arts, because you go to a consultant, we have a very fine body of arts and, fine arts and culture commissions, which are experts, who are really loyal and allegiance to the city Cupertino. Although I would say with due respect, some of those are not Cupertino residents, and that's something that I, I'm kind of troublesome, because you leave it to the recommendations by the fine arts, you know, and some of those are not Cupertino residents. And I simply say, the old saying is, ain't broke, don't fix it. You know, it's been there for so many years, and we took pride in all the beautiful fine arts in front of public buildings in the corner of Deansa and Stevens Creek, and we really enjoy it. So I urge council to support a planning commission decision, just leave it alone and don't go for outside consultant to set up a master plan, and don't reduce it to 1.1%, as there's no rationale at all. And we all take pride in it, and the city logo, the Marion is sitting out there, if it's not for council support, it's still sitting in the corporation, yeah. And I think right after the resolution was adopted, the Marion was pulled back from the corporation, but, yeah, and back to the city right in the corner. We all, I tell my kids, and this is the city logo, and I take pride in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, council members and staff. I very much support the recommendations of the Arts and Culture Commission. Yesterday, I sent you a picture of the art out at the forum. This is a classic example of a broken process. They, to comply and to save money, have onsite art. I could never find it. I had to ask John, where is it? And I drive past it all the time, because it's hidden. It's not, the residents don't go past it because their community is in the center of the development. They don't drive out there, a lot of them don't even drive. And there's no foot traffic at all. In fact, and you can't park even to enjoy it. So I am very much in favor of changing the policy so that we have more in-lu projects to build up an art fund. Now, one of the things that I think we really need to think hard about is the need for an art master plan. Right now, the way that the system is set up, I would guess that most developers would say, oh, I'll put it onsite. Well, that means it's going to be scattered all over the city, and that makes no sense. We should have a plan that says we want to concentrate art in a certain area, and we could use that in-lu fund to fund public art on public spaces. That art out at the forum would be much better at the senior center. But no, there was no flexibility. And so we're stuck. And so I urge you to move ahead with these changes. They're long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. And next, we have Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Stephen.
Hi, thank you. I'll be speaking for myself, not as part of Planning Commission. I think the current system of charging developers lower fees if they include public art in their project versus paying an in-lu fee should be retained. A previous council in 2005 wisely and unanimously adopted the present inclusionary policy. A week ago, this did come to Planning Commission, and we did vote to recommend retaining the current policy. So why did the 2005 city council decide that the public art in-lu fee should be higher than the amount for onsite art? Because they wanted to encourage the inclusion of public art as part of development projects, not collect money that might never be used to provide actual art. I think the current policy has served us well, it's resulted in some amazing public art, and I think residents want the public art and not the money. And it's wonderful to have art scattered all over the city and not concentrated in one place, so people can enjoy it in different parts of the city. So over at the forum, where approximately 1% of our population lives, it's true, we're unlikely, I'm unlikely to drive up to the forum to see it. But the people at the forum that live there, they can enjoy the public art, and it's wonderful that it was included there. And if a developer does choose to pay the higher in-lu fee for public art, then the fee should actually be used for public art and not for some other purpose. This is just common sense. The in-lu fee should not be used for other purposes. And I would say encouraging the inclusion of public art is almost akin to our inclusionary housing policy. Unlike some cities that collect an in-lu fee that are supposed to be used to build affordable housing, but it's such a small amount that none ever gets built, in Cupertino, we have a 15% to 20% requirement to include affordable housing, because we, just like art, we want the housing, we don't just want the money. And I think the other uses of the, of money that the Arts Commission has proposed, they may be worthy things to do. However, those should be funded by the general fund, not by the art in-lu fee that developer pays. So finally, just please continue to support public art in Cupertino by retaining the current policy. And I'd like to thank former Mayor Patrick Quoc, he was mayor when this policy was adopted in 2005. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Now we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. We have San Rao and Rhoda Frye. Welcome, San.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I am the chair of the Planning Commission, but speaking on behalf of myself only as a resident. I would firstly like to call your attention to the staff report attachment C, I believe, which is the analysis of the jurisdictions. And I would like to draw your attention also to the definition of the Mooney Code. Pay close attention to the unit. It is not the comparison of 1% versus 1.25% versus the other jurisdictions, but the question you want to ask yourselves is 1% of what? The attachment C talks about 1% or various other numbers of construction cost in some places. Our Mooney Code talks about 1% versus 1.25% of construction valuation. Construction cost and construction valuation are two different things. In commercial real estate, they are not the same thing. Further, attachment C has construction cost, and in other places it just says construction, without clarifying if it's construction cost or construction valuation. For a CWP that's been in work for two years with four hearings, I'm surprised that this has not come up yet. So before you proceed any further on this, I would urge you to dive deep on the accuracy and completeness of the staff report, because this entire discussion so far has hinged on this comparative analysis, whereas the unit of comparison is different and in some cases ambiguous. So I would just let that rest. The second thing I would like to add is, as, and thanks to Mayor Chow for pointing this out, as has been pointed out by Mayor Chow, the charter of the Planning Commission allows for a verification of the implementation of the general plan, and this is very much a part of the general plan. Furthermore, when the report comes to the Planning Commission with the agenda that has been set as accept the report, the commission may choose to accept the report, may choose to deny acceptance of the report, or may choose to recommend with modifications. And so recommending with modifications was actually done as a courtesy, I suppose we could have tested for whether there was support to deny acceptance, and perhaps they may well have been, because I think the spirit of the resolution of the motion was that we retain the great work that was done 20 years ago by then Mayor Patrick Quoc and several other council members that had then gone on to become great mayors themselves. So what we heard today was from two of our greatest mayors of Cupertino speaking in person in support of preserving status quo, if it's not broken, don't fix it. And on that resolution from 2005 are some of our finest council members who all voted unanimously. And so given this whole staff report is ambiguous and incomplete, and the unit of comparison is not the same, I'm not sure what we're discussing. I'm also further not sure whether we should be spending anything on consultants.
Thank you, San, that was your time. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Okay, thank you. So maybe, can the staff clarify between the construction cost, construction valuation, and then there is construction, without mentioning?
Sure, it's, you know, different terminologies for the same thing. You know, construction valuation has been implied and interpreted through staff since this ordinance was done in 2009, that this is construction cost. It's up to the council if they want to change the terminology to be more specific to construction costs. I think valuation is more of a professional term. You know, I, you know, if council sends us back, I can revisit the municipal code of other cities and see if they actually did use valuation to construction costs. I think, you know, putting it on this table, it was clear that construction costs.
So that's maybe, for example, take the public storage as an example. So we, how was that art fee calculated?
Construction, it was construction cost. So how much did it cost to construct the building? So when they provide the pro forma, it concluded, you know?
So they will provide the pro forma analysis, and, but then the construction cost usually varies when they propose a project, and then it might increase over time when they actually construct. So the fee is evaluated based on what they say is going to cost?
Yes, I mean, so let's say, you know, if you're going to calculate an in-lu fee as an example, you know, you would take it in prior to certificate of occupancy, you know, and the valuation, of course, valuation does-
I guess, when is the in-lu fee paid? I guess, when is the in lieu fee paid?
When prior to certificate of occupancy in the city of Cupertino. In other jurisdictions, it would be prior to issue to building permit.
So let's say, we, we know that construction cost has increased a lot during COVID. So let's say a project, when they planned it, the construction cost was 1 million. And then, but it might be a five-year approval, and by the time they construct, it's five years later, construction cost is 50% more. Do we charge art fee based on 1 million or 1.5 million, the actual final construction cost?
You would, you would do the pro forma basis as close to when the building permit was issued for the, for the project. So most of the time, majority of the time, the in lieu fee or the, or the evaluation of onsite art would be based upon post-building permit issuance.
Oh, so not, it's not pro forma analysis when they propose the project? So you would do a pro forma analysis when we issue the building permit?
Correct. So for example, Main Streets, you know, you know, they were approved, you know, 28, no, I'm sorry, 2020, right? So the related portion of development, which has not been constructed yet, they're performed based upon current dollars, not 2020 dollars.
But then, I thought valuation means, for example, I, I spend $1 million to construct, but normally people would want to sell the project for 3 million so they have, so that they, they are making profit, right? So I thought valuation would be 3 million, not 1 million. That they seem to be two different concepts.
I, I guess, I mean, if we're going to go down the semantics between valuation, construction, but the way it's always been interpreted and the way the application for the art onsite and rather in lieu would be based on a pro forma for actual construction.
Okay, so it says valuation, but we have implemented it as construction cost?
Correct. And if this, if the direction from council could be, again, this is again subject to council's volition, if they would like to have that term clarified to not have any type of misinterpretation of the term valuation, rather be more strict on cost.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, I'm very sorry. I inadvertently skipped over one of the public comments. And there's still a person waiting. If I, if you wouldn't mind reopening public comment? Okay, thank you. Rhoda Frye, apologies, welcome.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for finding me again. Yeah, so I don't know why we're looking at this. Let's please uphold what we've got. Sometimes we need exceptions, which happened with public storage. And it doesn't happen very often where we see Patrick Kwak coming, coming in to speak. And when he speaks, it means a lot. He was a very good mayor, and he's still a wonderful public servant. I was, I don't, in lieu fee should not be used for things that are not art because there, there, a lot of these, it's ephemeral. If we're going to have public art, we need, it kind of needs to be forever. Now, I saw what was going on with the in lieu fees for public storage, and I was not pleased by what I saw. It was an extraordinarily inefficient use of our funds. I had actually gone to the, I had gone to the city council meeting, and former Assistant City Manager Matt Morley was making a case for having binoculars at the Bub Park be art, considered art. And even what we did get, is it art? Hard to say. Actually, the Art Commission didn't really get a full picture. They were kind of strong-armed into voting for, for it when they didn't have all the details, certainly less details than they would have gotten had it been for something that was brought in by a developer. In fact, I had shared, Arts Commission did not get as much information about the planned public art at Bub Park that the council got. So I actually forwarded the council packet to the Arts Commission so they could get more visibility into what was going on. Unfortunately, those folks didn't read it because they were told, don't read attachments from people that you don't know. So I was a person they didn't know, so they didn't even get to, get to read the stuff that the council saw. You know, when we have the art in, in, when we have these art in lieu fees, that means that there could potentially be an unattended money grab. And that's exactly what happened with the public storage meeting. And my understanding is not all that money was used, and some of it needs to be restituted to, to the fund. It was allocated to Bub Park. It's finished, and now it should be put back into the fund. I haven't been tracking it completely, but anyway, let's leave it alone. And thank you for, for, for reopening the testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Mayor?
Thank you. I think one of the, and question Rhoda has is in the desk item. He wonders whether all the funding for the Jolly Man Park was used. So do you want to clarify that?
I believe, yeah, with the desk item, yeah, all the funding was used for the Jolly Man Park inclusion. The Jolly Man Park art.
So 250K were allocated from the art in lieu fee? And then eventually it was 367K?
Correct.
So it was slightly higher?
Correct, correct. Yes, CIT had managed that process.
Okay. So I think when I initially heard about, okay, let's revise art in lieu fees, what I had in mind, unfortunately, I think no one asked, asked the council for direction at the time, what I had in mind is exactly what's being pointed out here. Like Jean Bedore said, the art in the forum is in a location where many people cannot see. And then like the, the approval process for the Jolly Man Park, the Art Commission was involved at the very, at very late. They couldn't, they were just reviewing, not really deciding. And I think a lot of this public art, they, when it comes to Art Commission, it's very late stage in the project. So what I had, I was looking forward to see is an improvement in how we approve public art so we can get our Art Commission involved earlier in a project so they can decide or get involved with where the art should be. It could be on the wall, it could be on the sidewalk, it can be integrated into even side of a parking lot, parking structure, for example. There, and should, there should be that discussion early on rather than, here is, oh, we are going to construct, oh, that's one space, let's put the art there. And that's how it has become, I think, odd at the end. And then like the, the structure, the Allen, Allen Enterprise that's at the corner of Foothill and Stevens Creek. It's a really good art piece, but it's located so close to the building that it looks clustered there. So, and then I think Vice Mayor has mentioned another issue with the Westport project is the electrical wiring was an afterthought. So that's what I was looking forward for improvement in terms of process. I wasn't expecting a discussion on reduction of in lieu fee or art fund. So that, to me, was a surprise to see that recommendation from the Art Commission, I have to say. Okay, so Vice Mayor?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to share my screen. Can you get this? Okay, so this is a, this is a rough draft that I put together showing some, but obviously not all of the, the public art that we have in the city. And then I put the locations down for some of these. So we have the first Little Trees, item one. As has been mentioned, the Morian at Torian Rodriguez. And then the Peter Max painting that I mentioned about being on the cover of The Courier. If you're old enough to remember the Peter Max studio, they would have shops, galleries in shopping malls in various parts of California and probably elsewhere. So I, I had seen a lot of this art, so I was really surprised when I saw this painting, which was actually done over a photograph. The dancers, which we have out in the courtyard. I could not find the name of item five. It's at 19800 Wolf. Sorry, I have such a blurry photo, but this is a really cute one. Item six, it's the, the Reader. It's in the courtyard of the library with the bunny rabbit looking on. This, the, the quail family, if you remember during the pandemic, someone put little masks, handmade little masks for each one of the quails. And it's easy to miss that hawk, but it's up there in the, and then we have our, our guardians at the Veterans Memorial. Glass Flow, this looks really huge. It is not as massive as it looks here, but it's on Danza Boulevard. They repainted the Whole Foods, so it looks a little bit different now, but they retained the Magnificent Tree, still there. The Stargazers at Hyatt House and Natura. I don't know what they finally named this. This is the one that's at the Forum. And then this is a rendering of the Allen Row Project Bloom. And Mirage, their website, if you visit it, it's incredible. There's some music that goes along with it, but that's at the Apple headquarters. Art in Unexpected Places, the Harmony mural. Roger Berry's work at Calle Mill Plaza, item 16. And our brand new one, Emergence at Westport. And with regards to electricity, what they would have liked is some electrical wiring there, but they did put solar panel LEDs on top of each one of the butterflies to get a little nighttime interest. And then we have our beautiful pair of stone lanterns from our sister city in Memorial Park. That's what I was referring to about trying to work with that design. And then here comes the gingerbread with the, the Parish Home that was at the senior center. Trying to coordinate with that. I think that's a great project for the Arts and Culture Commission. I haven't actually ever seen Converge at Franco Park, but there is an art displayed there. And we have the Biltmore family at, this is near where, let's see, there was a, oh, there was, there was a hamburger place there, the counter, that was it. And then there's a number of Main Street projects, objects of art. And so you have the very large apple core, kind of ironic, many bird items, bird sculptures. This is a, actually, the next one is, this is a huge pair of murals that they have along the wall near the parking garage. Then we have a lighted sculpture. And the mayor mentioned having art on the side of parking garages, and, and we do have that. And the oak leaves, the, look like wheels. And then you've got the, the bird sculptures way up high on both sides of the, the tower at the parking garage. And then there's another, there's a trail with, there's, there's multiple pieces of art here, but it's near the Rotary's clock tower. So what I'd like to see is a compilation of all of this public art. And then I know there's, there's more to, to happen because it's hard to decide, you know, what, what's sort of missing in our, in our citywide collection. I like that it's distributed widely. You know, things on the east side of Cupertino, things on the west side of Cupertino. So I actually like that there is something way out at the Forum. And, but I wasn't really clear on, with regards to Art in Lou, where, like council could say, we would prefer that this money went into a fund as opposed to having an object at that location. What do you, what do you think about? The Bianchi project? That's another one where it's probably going to be kind of behind a wall. It might not be visible. You'll have to make, make a trek there. But since we have the art tour, we are encouraging people to go to all these different locations in the city and, and check these items out. The other part, there, on the art tour, they had the, the Blacksmith Building. And I'm going to stop sharing, which leads us to think about the architecture that we have. And I think that's why it ended up there, because it was architecturally significant. We happen to have the Apple headquarters, Norman Foster's beautiful building. And I think that an architectural compilation showing our historical structures and even, even Main Street, the way they tried to design the buildings to look as though it had happened over time organically with a slightly different styling could, could be part of that kind of compilation. And new, new structures as well, what, what they're going for so that if we see some Spanish colonial design, that we're able to identify that for our, for our own edification. With the, the art in Lou being used at Jolly Man for the playground, to me, I would have preferred, wanted to discourage that and then have an object somewhere else. Because if you're not a playground user, you might not go to that location. And, and I felt like we probably should have worked on the budget for that park if we, if we needed to have the funding and, and keep it as the playground budget and then try to keep the art parts separated. I think that might have, might have been a better idea. Personally, I think that council should retain the in lieu of decision-making. And because the Art Commission historically is, has not rejected any projects, and when we look at the, the collection that I, that I shared, there could be some that we would like to have be more challenging for the viewer. And there might be some things that we would actually like to steer the developer towards something else in the future. So I'd like to see the, the, the council have the, the final decision-making on the, the actual projects so that we do see them and we're not surprised when things are installed. Surprised or, you know, or, yeah, surprised works. So that is that. With regards to the, thank you for sharing the 700 square foot amount for the Emergence project. That, if you're looking at a $9 million per acreage cost, you're up over $100,000 for that piece of land, which they generously carved out for that, for that piece of art. And it's a, that's a really good example of having a large piece that has enough space around it so that you can enjoy that work. And I think the, the mayor had a good point about having the space be adequate so that the, the work is really highlighted. And so I think that when a piece is being suggested, that the, we would want the Art Commission to weigh in on that in how things are going to end up ultimately. So I did speak to the developers for the Staples Project, Summer Hill. They had some preliminary artists that they were looking at. And I did mention that to them, that I, you know, I appreciate that they're carving out space for this piece of art to go in. And it is, it does add cost. When a developer chooses to go the in lieu of route, that puts a burden on to the city to then try to figure out where is this going to go, you know, for us? Where, you know, what's, what city park are we going to put this in? Do we have a building that we, that's appropriate for a mural, for instance? It, it makes it a little bit harder for, for the city to then accommodate that. And like McClellan has the, the stream running through it. It's a preserve, however. So that's not, I don't look at that as a place for outdoor objects of art to be then located along the creek side, which you do see in some parks in, in other, in other areas. So we, we do have some limitations on what we can do and where we can do that. So I would want So I would want to see the developers place the, the objects on their property and try not to get out of the in lieu of fee. And given the cost of land here, I, to me, it makes sense that it would cost more if they're trying to not provide the, the art onsite. So I actually agree with the 1.25. I think it makes, it makes logical sense to have it be higher. Right, thank you. I think I've probably gone way over time.
What do you think about the art fund, using the fee for art fund?
I, I don't want to see the, the funding go for something other than an art object, be it, and I think that the municipal code is pretty clear about the kinds of things that they were looking for. When I started looking at this, I was, I went way back into when, into the 2000s, there's resources in the Fine Arts Commission records. And they started talking, they were talking about economic development and having public art. And then I found a whole series of articles which talk about how public art enlivens an area and activates it. And that you, you can bring in more foot traffic, you can help the, the businesses, and people will, you know, want to have their photograph next to these items and that it's really, it's really worthwhile. And I, I like the, the pieces that are more challenging for us as viewers to a, to a certain point, because we, you can get kind of edgy with, with your art and it's public art, and we want a lot of people to feel comfortable around it. But some of the metallic pieces aren't as challenging or, or generate as much thought as perhaps the emergence piece with the, with the butterflies and, and things like that. So I hope that the conversation in the future about these pieces will include critiques of the items that, so that we're not simply accepting every, every piece that's being brought forward. And it sounds like that's what's been happening historically is that there, maybe it is because it happens late.
I agree, yeah. I think some of the art piece that's proposed, I don't really think they are even art. But it might be good if the art commission can develop a policy on what kind of art we would like to see, maybe in different area of Cupertino or, or maybe on the side of building, those kind of thing. That might be helpful. So developers has some guideline to follow. I don't know if other cities have, I think Palo Alto has architecture review billboard. Maybe other cities have some public art guideline in terms of what they would like to see.
I think if I can just interject a little bit, I think what you're referring to, starting to refer to as an art master plan, right there. I mean, I mean, when you come up policy in different parts of town and, and that's what many other, and I'm not implying that that's what the city should go to, but I think what you're describing is going into the vein of an arts master plan.
I would hate to pay for consultant to make up another plan than the way hardly ever referred to. So, yeah. Anyway, so Vice Mayor and the Councilmember Mohan is waiting. But this is a study session, so I would like, I hope that each council member provide what you think about art commission recommendation and planning commission recommendation. So the staff has some idea on what they can bring back in as first reading.
Okay. Yeah, so I just wanted to move this discussion along and maybe come up with some items that would be the foundation for any feedback that we will be providing to staff, because that is what we're supposed to be doing today. Just a comment about art, you know, and, and thank you, Vice Mayor Moore, for providing that collection of art. I'd forgotten one or two, and it was really fun to look at all the art pieces that we have, artwork that we have. I also wanted to say, and this is pretty obvious, art is subjective and what I like, you may not like. So there's a lot of beauty or lack of beauty has, is really in the eyes of the beholder. So we need to sort of keep that in mind, that there's no one piece of art that will satisfy everyone, and that's the way it should be. So for a discussion purposes, and, and maybe staff can correct me if I'm not understanding this right. What is the, the key difference between what the Arts, Art and, Art and Culture Commissions recommended and what the Planning Commission recommended, other than, is it the one and the 1.5?
I, I think the key differences between the comments from the planning commission was that they were more apt to status quo, maintain it as is, it's functioning properly, with the exception that there was a general agreement with the Arts and Culture Commission's recommendation to create a separate art fund. I think that's a key difference. And I think with the Arts and Culture Commission's recommendation to council, that is more as being aligned with neighboring jurisdictions, you know, maintaining, you know, them retaining a little bit more discretion in terms of what the developer can use, whether the developer can use it in lieu fee or, or developing an art piece onsite. So I mean, that's, that's the key. I think those are the key differences.
Okay, so I, I would like to sort of use the Arts and Culture Commission recommendations as, as the basis for this feedback, other than making them the final approver for the in lieu payment. If the city council can be the approval body, we can, my suggestion and my position would be to have parity between the onsite art and the in lieu payment, just makes things simpler. And remember, it's, it's, it's a choice that we are giving developers. You can do this or you can do that. And it just, I, I think makes the whole process a little more efficient when we say they're both 1%. And it's not a matter of just sticking with what we did in 2009. Things have changed and we certainly don't want to put additional hurdles in the way of development. Because we, we have to come up with, you know, we have written our numbers to comply with, and unless the laws change, we have to stick with what, with the law. I agree that we should maintain a separate art fund, and I think we are sort of doing that now. I mean, we've only had one case in recent years, the public storage. So creating a separate art fund does make sense. And it's, it's not that we are pushing the developers to say, hey, go with the onsite art as opposed to giving us money. It's not about collecting money and not letting it go anywhere. It's just allowing the city and the commission to have a say in the nature and location of public art. And their, the Arts and, Arts and Culture Commission recommendation to fund the development of a master plan makes sense. I am not clear about what expansion of funding to programming beyond physical art, such as theater and work scholarships. I'm less clear about what all that means, but I agree that the city council should be the decision making body after having taken the recommendations of the Arts and Culture Commission.
Let me clarify. So art commission proposed to try, will strike out language that in lieu fee is discouraged.
Correct. I would approve that. Yes, I do. Yes, I do. Yeah. I do.
And then they propose the art fund should, could be used for.
Mayor, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I forgot to turn it on. So my earlier question was, just want to clarify that you agree with art commission that in lieu fee should, we strike out the language that in lieu fee is discouraged?
Yes.
So.
Because we're not saying one way or the other.
Saying one way or another. And then do you agree that the art fund, if we create one, could be used for other programming? It seems you are not sure.
I'm not, I'm not understanding that, but I do want the art fund, funds to go towards public art.
So only public art, not other programming?
Yeah, that, that's, and maybe I could get a clarification.
Yeah, I'm confused about that too. We currently already have fund we collect, which if, whether we create a separate fund or not, if we say this fund like from the public storage is for public art, and do we create a fund or not, does that, what's the difference?
That's a great question. And, you know, I, I will, I could come back with, with the answer to what, how that's differentiated in a financial way. You know, what we had for the public storage was a line item in the general fund, rather than having some that's completely independent, that was, could be only exclusively used for art funding, I think, council member?
No, I was just going to offer a point of order. If you wanted clarification on what was intended as the use of the funds, we do have the chair of the, the Arts and Culture Commission here, and she might be able to illuminate it for you.
Okay, that's a good point. We can ask the art commission chair. But I think in terms of fund, I do want to know, if we don't create a fund, it's a line item. If we create a fund that will add administrative overhead, right? But the purpose really is the same, whether we, if it's, we only use it for public art?
Sure. I think what I'll do is, I mean, with this feedback from the study session, we can, we could discuss with our finance department, say, well, you know, what, I mean, are there any differences between having a separate art fund or just a regular line item in a general plan? I'm sorry, the general fund, but, you know.
Mayor, you, just to clarify, are you asking if, what the difference might be in the use? Or does that create more staff work to have a separate fund? Is that what you're asking?
It seems right now, if anyone pays in lieu fee, we set that aside, and then we would use that when, to create public art.
Correct.
Even if it's not a specific fund. And now the planning commission, even though they are saying the fund should be used for public art, but they recommend to create a fund. What does that mean? We are already doing that.
We are already doing that. And it, I think the difference is, it is part of the general fund, which is okay, because anytime you use funds from that source, it will still have to be restricted to public art. So it's not, it doesn't have to be a separate, whatever enterprise fund or a separate.
So we don't need a separate fund.
I agree.
Nash, okay. So, so Councilmember Fruen mentioned you want clarity on what programming they have in mind. Would you like to ask the?
Sure. If I could have the chair come up and explain what programming means.
We need to turn on the mic.
Oh, I do that?
The mic, the mic is not turned on.
So your video will do that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. I think you're there. Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come back and speak. Yeah, so those are examples. I think we, for us, one of the items we did call out master plan, again, that does not mean what the execution would be. This is all, we would have to make a recommendation and bring it to you. It does not implicitly mean to hire a consultant. It, it could be really something smaller. It could be a part of the subcommittee of the Arts and Culture Commission with some allocation. Again, that is not given, that it's to be a consultant costing whatever large amounts. The advantage of having, I just want to clarify on the art fund, if I may, is that you could combine different allocations to a bigger project. So that's one advantage, rather than have separate line items. But again, I will leave it to the, at least that was our thinking. In terms of then coming back to the programming, we thought art is more than a physical sculpture. So we wanted to leave that broad, especially in terms of, I also heard mural. I don't know whether that was the public art that was initially thought of. So we wanted to just name some options. I know we have talked about even probably the word, the master plan is there, the word programming is there. So for example, it could be that a really small part, again, for example, 1% could be allocated. You want to have a specific art show every year in the city of Cupertino. Again, it's an example. Maybe it is $5,000, but at least it gives you an option to bring something more, and that could be a trigger to something bigger that we want to do in our community. So we have said, for example, also, and again, making a vision, we visited the Palo Alto Art Center, as Sean was pointing out, but it's, it's really inspiring. Could we imagine that we have perhaps a current city facility or a site, and that can be used for art and culture center for Cupertino? So it just gives us options that we can think about based on what our community wants, where the maximum impact is, if we did have available art in lieu funds. And of course, we bring it back to the city council.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I just want to point out, staff report does include this item from the art commission, that the art fund could be used to fund development of an arts master plan. And other commission recommendation include expansion of the fund to programming beyond physical art as theater and even scholarship. So these are what they have in mind. This is from the commission. Okay, so Councilmember Fruen?
So I broadly agree with the sentiments that Councilmember Mohan raised. One thing I would definitely like to point out is the, the recommendation for some sort of an, an early look from either council or members of the Arts and Culture Commission on physical art that is going to come forward with the project, if only because I don't really like the surprises either. And I, I feel like it would be good for the Arts and Culture Commission in particular to have some additional things to do. And given the number of projects that are in the, the pipeline, I think they're going to have a lot to do in the next few years. So that's, that's sort of point one. If we are going to move toward creating a decision point that is part of council's decision making process or the Arts and Culture Commission's process, as to whether or not the in lieu fee is available and take that discretion away from the developer as a matter of right, then I do think that it needs some, some guardrails and we should create perhaps something that is along the lines of our conditional use permit process that defines under what conditions it would be appropriate to allow a fee out instead. Something that would help to solve some of the, the ills that I think have been identified here. I, I disagree, having visited the forum many times and talked to folks there, I haven't found anyone who lives at the forum who, at least amongst the people who know that this art is there, and that is a distinct minority, who like it in that position. Most of them make fun of it. So I think that as long as we have some mechanism for either an alternative location policy where the developer can fund the, the construction of the, the public art, but in a different place perhaps that the city controls, that sounds like a good idea. Identification of locations where perhaps the, the threshold size of the development is so small that the contribution to the fund is going to be relatively small, and therefore the art that could be done onsite would probably be likewise very small, that perhaps it's better to, to contribute that to a fund where you could actually produce a, a piece of art somewhere else in the city that would be more valuable. But again, I would want the city attorney's office to look at the viability of denying a, a developer this particular option as a matter of right, because we would be an outlier in that respect, and that would be an unusual situation. So those are, those are my main points. But I do understand the, the idea of wanting to be able to encourage the dissemination of the art across, you know, the city, wanting them to be with new projects. But I also want to make sure that we're not forgetting about outlier cases and that we have a mechanism for dealing with that. And I think that we can do that in that, that portion of the process, the decision of, the decision point of, is this project going to be able to use the in lieu fee process? of, is this project going to be able to use the in lieu fee process, or is it going to have to produce it onsite? So I think that, you know, if there were a compromise to be made, that's the one that makes the most sense to me, and I do think that we should align the, the two fees, I don't really see a, a good rationale, if we're controlling the, the decision point of whether it's allowed at all, I think they should just match, and again, that would put us back into line with, with our peer jurisdictions, we would start to look a lot like Palo Alto's system, thanks.
If I may, through the mayor, if I could make just something to consider when discussing an early view for the Arts and Culture Commission prior to approval of a project, as we're seeing most of our projects are residential in nature, in the cadence of our Arts and Culture Commission, which is bimonthly, you know, could we, could there be a potential where, especially with new legislation such as AB 130, which puts these projects on expedited timeline, you know, what is the reality of having the Arts and Culture Commission, the ability of them to look at this in a timely manner, and will this potentially hold up a project's approval? So just take that consideration.
If, if I might, I, I've, I've thought about that, and I, I thank you for raising it, because I, I didn't mention it, I'm not necessarily indicating that you would have to go directly to a meeting of the, the Arts and Culture Commission, I think you could require a consultative process from the developer to simply go and talk to them individually. They do that already with, with council members, when there's a project that's coming, if, if the individual members of the, the Arts and Culture Commission don't want to meet with them, that's their call, but I think if, if there's a consultative process that exists, that that might satisfy that need.
Okay, I do have a question regarding the timeline, so you, you are saying that the cost, the fee is actually estimated at the time of permit issuing, not at the time of project approval, right?
Correct, so I mean, the timing of when-
So then, it's more point about the project on expected, expected timeline, because that has to do with the approval.
My, my point was a consideration that if the council wants to give direction that the Arts and Culture Commission weigh in earlier in the process, such as prior to development approval, that there are certain guidelines, or certain state mandates, I think that's more of an appropriate term, to expedite development approvals, that requiring the, the Arts and Culture Commission to weigh in and approve a certain, or give, even at least direction to developers on a certain art piece prior to project approval could,
I don't know, I was thinking it's not before the approval, it's after project approval, there are still a lot of flexibility on where you can put an art piece, right?
That's basically the current system right now.
But it seems the current system, the Art Commission doesn't get involved until the very end.
I guess any more clarity from the council?
Yeah, so maybe we need-
It's true that the pre-entitlement, so pre-going the Planning Commission or City Council for approval, the Art Commission is not seeing the project. Very often, though, I think projects have identified a location on site where art could go, where it would be visible, without having had a particular piece in mind, so that, that identifies a location, but it doesn't identify, I believe like the Vice Mayor had pointed out, you, if you wanted lighting, for instance, or other features,
Yeah.
it would be better to plan for that infrastructure ahead of time, so it's not an afterthought, that would be a trickier piece.
But would that need to be part of the approval? That doesn't need to be, right?
I don't think it could be, it would be extremely difficult or unrealistic to do, especially with the timelines we get.
And, and, so then, at what point, I don't know, did a project come to the council when they decide they will pay the in lieu fee? So it's not at the time of project approval, it's later when they-
After they're approved, correct.
So what, at what stage they, because the, the other process don't come to the council, so they will just, in, when the issuance of permit, it's all administrative process, right? So there, there would be a separate item, just come to the council to, to get permission to pay in lieu fee, that's the current system?
Yes, so, so for the actual art piece, physical art pieces, ASA, Architectural Site Approval, and we would process it as an architectural site approval as well, mostly to recoup staff time for processing the request to, to, to do the in lieu fee, so that's, yeah, and that would be, that would all have to be completed prior to certificate of occupancy.
Okay, so it's, as, as part of the architectural site approval. I have another question, how about someone is adding, for example, the forum just added the skilled nursing facility? Would they, would they be required to pay an art in lieu fee or install public art with this kind of addition?
Yeah, so anything over 10,000 square feet.
Okay, so they, so they had installed the public art on their site?
Yeah, well, but the, the example that Ms. Bedore had shown is, is what, what was required for them.
No, I mean, the skilled nursing facility, it's a new building they have just added, but I don't know how many square feet.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, I, I believe we're talking about the same thing, that was-
Okay, maybe I'll find that later, okay, so, and Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. So I had asked a question about the Apple headquarters project a couple of years ago, and it was because I didn't know what the public art was, and I was wondering if the building was counting as public art, and then, a few months later, the, I believe it's called Mirage, project showed up, so, yeah, our, did, did Apple have that location planned at the outset of their development, or was this kind of, what it looked like was that it was an afterthought to place that there? They had had some trees in that area, and they kind of reworked the landscaping, and then, and did this big installation, how did that process go?
Sure, and again, I, I was, that's previous my time with the city, but I will, I would say that the, the approval of the actual art piece came quite a bit, quite a bit afterward, and at the time, it was, Apple was only allowed to pay, was capped at paying $100,000, up to $100,000, I think they spent quite a bit more than that, I can, I can-
I'm sure they did, yeah.
Come up afterward and-
But that's, but that's an example where they didn't even, in, in my, my guesstimation, they didn't even carve out an area that they were going to have their art be located at until, how it seemed is that the city then got involved and asked them about it, and, and so they, they then provided that art, so that was really, it seemed really, really late in, in the process there. The municipal code, I think there, there was an oversight in the process where there should have been an art in lieu of fund already established, in, and maybe it needed to have been codified, like Parkland, the dedication fee that we have, and that shows up in the budget, it'll show up in your ACFR, and, and we track it, so this one, it looks like, kind of like a fast, quick municipal change we need is to get that art in lieu of fund codified, that this establishes this special revenue fund called the Art in lieu of Fund. I, I'm still going to stick with the 1.25 because of the cost of land, what we're seeing is that the developers are taking waivers and concessions, they're moving their projects up to, close, close to the street, they're not providing this space, and so this, if you allow the developer to just say, oh, I don't, I don't want to provide art, I, I'm going to, you know, take, take these other state laws and, and, you know, forget about that, and then I'm going to send some money to the city, and you figure out where to put this on your property, and, and how that could end up looking is that you end up with a, an odd carved-out section in a park where a, a piece of yard art is essentially plunked down, and without any great visual context to it, and it's, it doesn't, doesn't work out, so my, my preference is to stick with the 1.25. I'm, with regards to a master plan, so that discussion with, that I had with the Summerhill developer, what was interesting there was, you know, I'm not providing any direction, but I'm, one of the things that I noticed, looking at the different artists that they had, that they were looking at, was that some had very bold colors, and some had more muted colors, and what I said to the developer was that, depending on how you plan on designing your project, what color scheme you're going to be using, and whether or not you're looking for something that's harmonious with that, or something that's really bold and, you know, opposite colors, it's gonna, that's, that's your choice that, that you're going to be doing there, and so, and for each one of these developers, that's going to be something that they're going to be considering, and I imagine that happened with Westport in the selection of the artists for, for emergence, they, I imagine they wanted something that would enhance their project, and, and I think they, they did that, so I think a master plan for these types of projects, it would be a, a fruitless endeavor, your, each project is going to be its own, its own thing separately, where they're going to make these decisions based on what will look good, same with Mirage at Apple, the city could have come up with a master plan, Apple's going to build what they want that will enhance that project, makes perfect sense, so I, I don't see the usefulness of trying to direct at, at what's, what's going to be decided by these various developers. The other part with the, the general plan with regards to art that hasn't been addressed in our municipal code is the part about public art on public property, and if we're going to go down that route, where, for instance, the art, the art, the library expansion was only maybe 5,000 square feet, but you, you could have added on an art requirement for, for that project. I, I had asked questions about the small cell towers, could there have been an art in lieu of fee in order to essentially mitigate the negative visual impact of having those put around the city, it didn't look like that was something that could potentially be done, but that's the basic idea of it, is that if, if a developer's coming in and they're building a very plain, boxy structure right up against Stevens Creek Boulevard, for instance, that you would, is there some way to visually mitigate what they're doing? They, they want to provide all these, the housing units, however, it's, it's, it's something incompatible with the structures around it, in terms of size and scale and architecture, but they're allowed to do that, is there something that the city can, you know, ask for and hold them to, to provide some visual respite from what's being added to the city, and that's kind of why I don't want to see the developer be able to simply wave away the, the, the art requirement by choosing to have the art in lieu of fund taken. And I did mention earlier the architectural compilation, so I'm, I'm not sure how we can direct these, these sort of projects to happen, I, I kind of think with regards to the public art that we already have, which I shared those images of, that that probably should be part of an inventory that we have in the works, I was kind of curious if some of these items need to be appraised, perhaps, any of them, if in case there's, there's damage or something that, you know, God forbid, should that happen, so I'd like to hear if that's something that, that, that needs to be done for maybe even insurance purposes. And I think that's through my list, all right, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Fruen?
Yeah, just a, a quick closing thought, I neglected to thank the Arts and Culture Commission for the amount of work that they've clearly put into this, it's been, looks like the lion's share of your meetings going back for a year, and, and I, I hope that we are not just dispensing with the, the advice and recommendations that are being brought to us by our commission too flippantly, so thank you for the work that you did, I don't know what will ultimately come from this body, or what will ultimately wind up deciding, but don't, don't think that it was a wasted effort, thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, I'd like to thank the Art and Culture Commission for all the work that's put into that, but unfortunately, I felt, I was surprised by these recommendations, it's true, no fault of anyone, I think we, we have a process that's probably not very clear, because when the work program was proposed, I was thinking one thing, maybe another people was thinking a different thing, and then there was never a discussion, and then staff and this Arts Commission went one direction, while now I'm thinking, what? That's, I was thinking totally the other direction, so that's why I'm thinking, okay, in the future, maybe when there is broad description, we should have a check-in with the council, so that we don't waste staff and the commission time. So I, it's, it's hard, I have to say, I kind of agree with Planning Commission recommendation, I really appreciate that they pushed to give us a recommendation, I would like to keep the in lieu fee as they are, and I do want to still encourage onsite public art, because it would be nice distributed through the city, every development has an art piece that really improve, I think, the overall feeling of Cupertino, so they are not just a boring building, and, and also, I think it's probably, like, they, they, it will occupy a piece of their property, and it's probably less expensive for them to install than having the city find the land, find another place, so I think the current policy established by previous council makes sense, as for the separate art fund, I'm, I think I need more information, what's the advantage of a fund or not, and if, it might be nice to have a separate fund, if it doesn't add too much administrative costs, so that we know there is a fund for art, but then I would like that fund to be only for public art, not confuse that with any other art program, even though I love art, I really think our city don't have enough art, even if you look around City Hall, if you look around the library, if I go to Santa Clara City Library, I take pictures of their art piece, but there are not a lot of pieces in Cupertino I would take picture of, so, so these are art, but then I see in the roles, powers and functions of Art Commission, actually, there are a lot of exciting things they could be doing, but it's true that we currently don't have, maybe we need to allocate general fund for, to, for some of these activities, especially the ones that really connecting with the community, finding out what art activities are there, and facilities are there in Cupertino, if we, Art Commission, Art and Culture Commission can become that resource, that partner with the community to provide those information, and maybe partner with a nonprofit that can help provide that result, we don't have to have general fund for those. We don't have to have general fund for those. And, yeah, I agree that decision-making part-body should still be in the City Council, but I'm still not clear, when are we doing that? Of course, we don't want that to be a hindrance to the development process, we do want to make sure that their timeline is not delayed by art, but then we do want to find a way to integrate that decision earlier, so we can together this, give the Art Commission more latitude in providing their input, helping, helping to choose a location or the category of art that can, we can, might see in a development. Yeah, so, any other things I should cover? So that, did we get a comment from Councilmember Ray Wong?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Wong.
Because he's not here, and, but he will be here when we vote on the first reading, so I thought we should get his input so that, so he is sending some written comment?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Wong sent in a comment that he supports the Planning Commission's recommendation for this item.
Okay, so I think we are not giving any, we are not voting, but I think the staff will come, get our, get a sense of what we are all looking for, maybe the next time we will have a first reading of our proposed policy. So, anything else anyone would like to add? No? Okay. So, do you have anything you want to clarify with us?
Yeah, what's next? That's really, no, so, I'm just trying to understand, I mean, there's some conflict, you know, it's a two-two right now, right? And so, I mean, I mean, these issues, half the council wants to, you know, have the in lieu fee equal to the, to the contribution for the onsite art piece, the other half wants to maintain status quo. But that's something we can work out, maybe at a first reading and bring it back. I see the Vice Mayor shaking.
I was just going to say, why don't we take the, some of these discussions and we can have a...
Maybe, let me ask the city attorney. So, we do have two-two for those present today, and, but then Councilmember Wong submitted a written comment, and given the fact that we will have the full council when we approve the first reading, so what would be your suggestion on how we proceed?
My suggestion is that staff, my general sense is that we have enough information from the council, when we bring back something for the first reading, there may be further changes. We might be sent back to do more redlining, but I'm not sure this evening we're going to be able to flesh out, you know, all of the detail. I feel like we have sort of like big-picture items that perhaps a majority of the council would agree on, and I think we can proceed.
So, it seems, so should the staff for first reading bring a virgin that agree with the Art Culture Commission recommendation, or a virgin that agree more with the Planning Commission recommendation?
Or both.
Or both? Can they just bring both and then we decide?
I feel like bringing both is, if we're bringing ordinances, then both would be wasted effort. If we're bringing...
Why couldn't we have two items with two different ordinances and we can vote on item three and then item four?
Let me say something. If I could just cut in for one second, I think the way I look at this is you have several components, and you may want to consider each component separately, like keeping the fee where it is, or leveling that out, creating an art fund or not creating an art fund, and that might be easier. There seems to be consensus on some things, less so on others, and I think we could have a staff report that broke them down by those decision points. That would seem to be a way to have you consider each of them separately, so when the meeting was done, we would have consensus on the individual items.
You mean consensus today?
No, when we were to come back before the council, correct.
So, but then can we do that with the first reading, though? Or do we need another study session?
I don't think you need another study session. I think you could do it at a first reading. Now, whether we would have everything decided at the end of that, that's hard to know.
So you mean, as part of the first reading, we can still have option A and B?
Yes.
We can do that?
So, in a sense, it would be like carrying over the study session, but you'd actually be making motions on items, and that way, at the end of the meeting, you would have a decision.
Okay, so we can do that as part of the first reading, right?
Mayor, can I go back and just discuss this with staff a little bit as we debrief and kind of rehear all of the comments and see if we get any consensus out of that? I would, I would not want to bring different options in terms of ordinances.
I think we have had a first reading where, for example, the council might modify something, and then we adopt that modified virgin as the first reading.
I think what we want to avoid is having ordinance A, ordinance B, we just present one ordinance, and at that first reading, council at your discretion can say, can motion, we like this, we like that, and by the time you come back for the second reading, or another first reading, we can have those changes, or two first readings that reflect the council's decision at that first reading. But, you know, I think it's inefficient, as the city attorney had pointed out, to have two competing ordinances.
So, you are saying we don't have two, we have one ordinance, but then you all have A1, B1, A2, B2?
We would have one ordinance, and then the council at that first reading can make suggestion for further redlines if they so motion and approve.
But then if we do the red line on the fly, that would be even harder, that's why it's better to have a second ordinance.
Mayor, in my opinion, the ordinance is complicated enough that it will be largely impossible to have these two alternates and then be able to revise the ordinance on the fly at the meeting.
Therefore, I think we need to have two virgins of the ordinance. That way, we can say, this section, I want virgin one, this section, I want virgin two. I think that's better, yeah. That way, we have clear language on either option, right?
Vice Mayor needed it. Mayor, thank you. So, I think that, actually, we might need another, another study session, and I'd like to hear from Councilmember Wong about this, that we have basically a summary of what we discussed tonight, if that could come back, and then at that point, we could provide some direction, because with a split vote, we really can't come back with the current ordinance, the way it was written, because we don't have support there. But we also need some discussion about what's the, what are the pros and cons of having the special revenue fund for Art in lieu, and for accounting, so that might be something that Jonathan and Christina would like to share on that.
Okay, so we, we'll just do another study session.
Why don't we do an action item the next time?
Action item, but then it's still a study session, though.
No, we have a vote.
We can have a vote in a study session.
If we do a straw vote, I know what Councilmember Wong is recommending based on the Arts Commission or Planning Commission, so I know what he wants to see. If I get a little, kind of an informal straw vote, then staff will have an indication on...
That's what I was trying to do.
We could do that, Ray Floyd.
We already each spoke on this. I think that's why I was asking each council member to speak on what you support or not support of the recommendation. I thought every one of us have commented on those proposed items.
I don't actually see there being a two-two split, yes, in this room, but we did get, granted, it was a one-sentence recommendation, but we did get a recommendation from Councilmember Wong, and it was basically to follow what the Planning Commission said.
Just as a point of order, when did that come in?
The county, the city clerk's office received that earlier today, this afternoon.
Okay, so Councilmember Wong hasn't had the benefit of this entire hearing, and we're all supposed to be keeping an open mind so that the public has the opportunity to weigh in in advance. So, I'm not sure that I would so readily assume that that is necessarily how he feels or that that's appropriate.
That makes sense. So let's just do another study session, yeah. And so then, so we would like, so information on the art separate fund or not, so anything else we would like information on? I think I would like more clarity on how we can get the Art Commission involved earlier without delaying the development project, and so if we can get more clarity on that and the...
Or Mayor, you mentioned the municipal code and the, the things that the Arts and Culture Commission is supposed to be working on, perhaps a little report showing how they could meet all those duties, that might be helpful. Also, how to promote the installation of new art pieces.
So you would like to refer this item, or separate from this item, just a direction for Art Commission to review the powers and function of Art Commission and discuss how they can meet those?
I mean, more for staff to identify how these items have been met and how they could be met if they aren't presently.
Oh, okay, so for the staff to provide more information on how the Art Commission has done.
And what further things? What further things we can do to promote the art that we do have, because we have a few really amazing pieces that have come in recently? Yeah, so that the art tour is brought up to date and that the website has those pieces as well, because you, if you're not, if you don't have that app, you might just want a, you know, a foldable map or something.
Yeah, yeah, I think I mentioned that in the Sunnyvale Senior Center, they have a map of the seniors, of the city with a guide, self-guided tool that you can walk through to see all the different public art. For seniors, that probably will be easier for them than an augmented reality app, so...
And one more item, Mayor, if you'll allow me to interrupt. We also have Deansville College, which has many art objects there as well, and if they, if we could hear a little bit about what they have, that would be great, and there's, I'm pretty sure they've got a map of their installations as well.
But you want the staff to bring that back next time?
Well, I think it's part...
At some time.
Yeah, I think it's part of our collaboration and inventory that we have within the city's borders, is that not only do we have our art, but we also have what Deansville College has, and that we're able to go visit their museum there and see what they have on site.
Okay. Anyone has, would like more information on? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
I'm just anticipating it's probably coming early next year, based upon availability on the agenda.
Yeah, I think this is, we are not in a hurry, right? So, so, yeah, just whenever.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have time today for the remaining items.
No, 10:30, Mayor.
Oh, 10:30, okay, we have one minute, okay. And then we'll just adjourn the meeting.
Great, thank you.